Welcome to the April 28, 2011 meeting of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and the people with me should introduce themselves.
Emily Innis, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Peter Jackson, member.
Bernie Lynch, member.
Diane Colligan, secretary.
William Clark, planning director.
All right. We're going to look at the minutes of April 14 or March 24. And what do you think?
I move that the minutes of March 24 be approved.
With two changes, right?
Yep.
On the second page, Diane, you're going to -- our board member Edward Duffy accepted the motion to approve a zoning change, not to a zoning change, to approve a zoning change. And on the last page, Maclean is M-A-C-L-E-A-N. And here, I'll give you these two changes, and we have a motion to approve them with those changes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Has everyone read these rather lengthy April 14 minutes?
Yes. And I would move to approve them with one change.
Well, I think that we will work them over again.
Nobody's read them? Okay.
And, well, I just noticed that I did something that I wanted to revise.
Fair enough. Then I withdraw my motion, suggest we table them for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll go, we'll do these the next meeting. We need minutes to do next meeting, and now we have some, so this is good. And our next meeting is next week. No, yes.
Yes.
We have a town meeting. We may possibly meet on Tuesday, but I don't think so. We'll post it.
Okay.
We have already posted Monday and Tuesday as necessary.
We're going to not meet on Monday.
Withdraw Monday and keep Tuesday.
We're going to keep Tuesday, but we may not meet then because there seems little to meet about, especially since we're meeting on Thursday.
True, yes.
So, we will see, but keep that Tuesday meeting posted just in case something big comes up. Okay? So, we're going to meet then on May 5, May 12, May 26 at 6:30 PM each time in locations to be determined.
Busy month.
The next item of business is Citizens Speak, where we hear from citizens who want to address the board on matters pertinent to the board's mission. So, who would like to speak? There are no citizens present who wish to address the board. All right. So, now we're going to hear from Mr. Clark, who is going to give us the Town Planner's Report, which is always a highly anticipated item.
I've been dealing with issues dealing with the wind turbine, some of the legal issues with the Corey Hills petition the court to file -- they filed an injunction against the town, and I've been dealing with town council to get stuff ready for that hearing, which took place last Thursday, getting things ready for the initial DEP meeting, since Corey Hills also appealed the order conditions from the Conservation Commission, getting stuff ready for the DEP site meeting next week, dealing with the snake issues up there.
The snake issues?
Yeah, we got snakes up there. East Milton --
And we want to preserve the snakes, I assume?
Absolutely, we're trying to preserve the snakes.
Okay.
We've got a three-year study that we are paying for. We finished one year, we're in the start of the second year. East Milton Parking and Access Study, the draft RFP went out to the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee yesterday. I've been taking and reviewing it.
And what is the RFP for?
I'm sorry, it's the draft --
Draft report.
Report.
You almost started a whole wave.
I just have RFPs in the brain from writing too many. Planning Department, just the paperwork, dealing with some mapping issues for Selectman's Office for some of their projects and this department. That's it.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for the Town Planner on either the items that he has raised or other items?
Yes. What is the schedule on the East Milton Parking Study? If the draft report's just gone to the committee, what's the timeline for wrapping the whole thing up?
Good question.
I thought so.
On Monday, the 4th, the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee is meeting amongst themselves to --
Monday, the 4th of June?
May.
May 4th.
Monday's the 7th.
Thursday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, May 4th. Okay, May 4th, how about that? I'll start giving dates.
May 4th works, yeah.
They meet on May 4th amongst themselves to discuss the draft that was sent to them yesterday. On May 11, there is a Business and Citizen Advisory Committee meeting that I'll have to talk to Mike, but I hope it will be televised, and that one, that's open to the public. We do take questions from the public at that particular meeting after the Business and Citizen Advisory Committee has had their say on what they see. On May 18, there will be a townwide public meeting at Cunningham Hall, and that will be to hear the recommendations from that draft report.
What day of the week is that, Bill?
They're all Wednesdays.
Thank you.
The 4th, the 11th, the 18th, they're all Wednesdays.
Thanks.
The, on 131 Elliot Street, I did type up my notes. I didn't type them up, I gave them to Diane, and Diane would process them, and we sent them off to the developer, and these notes are available to the public at the Town Planner's Office and should be distributed to the board for their consideration. Next week, next, on the 5th, we will be discussing the issues raised in the notes. We also, I want to discuss the parking study, so get out the parking study and read it over.
Right.
Because that is something that we will be --
I'll deliver hard copies to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Seventy pages long, so.
What, they have a new parking study?
No, the, I thought you were talking about the East Milton, I bet.
No.
No, but if you want to deliver the draft to us, that would be fabulous.
Get them anyways.
What I want you to deliver is four pages long, and you can send it to the board by email.
No, the East Milton study.
Whatever we're talking about now. Okay.
I jumped the gun and --
All right, but if you want to distribute the 70 pages, you should feel free.
Thanks.
Isn't that on there? Isn't, if you get on their website, isn't that studying on?
Yes.
So, all I have to do is get on that website.
Yeah, so don't send me a hard copy. I'd rather just do it online.
Now, one thing I think that we should, we should think about in the future is that when we have witnesses, the background on TV is cluttered.
Less than salubrious?
We have coat hangers, a podium, it looks like a cooler, and some sort of a card table. I think that we need a better backdrop for our witnesses, because I think this is demeaning to them to have to be photographed in front of this clutter. Okay, we are now going to --
Can I just ask, you said for next Thursday's meeting, you want to discuss traffic study, so that's the traffic study they submitted as part of their application?
Yeah.
Want us to review them, be ready to discuss it?
That's the only traffic study we have.
No, we have East Milton.
Yeah, but this is different.
I wasn't talking, I wasn't actually talking about East Milton.
Alex wasn't, Bill was. That's why it got --
Part of the agenda for next Thursday in our discussion of 131 Elliot will be the traffic.
Yes.
And we're not going to discuss East Milton?
No.
No.
Okay.
That is clear.
All right. 36 Central Avenue, a continued hearing with respect for an application for an amended special permit and amended site plan approval. Why don't you introduce yourselves for the board and the viewers and the audience?
Good evening, my name is Paul Sullivan, I'm here representing Formar Enterprises.
And Robert Hannigan, engineer for the project.
All right, Mr. Sullivan, why don't you give us a brief rundown of just where we stand here?
At the previous meeting, we discussed some exterior material changes, including the front columns being trimmed out with an engineered wood product, and at the end of the evening, there was a discussion about the stone. There seemed to be some dissatisfaction with the selection, and John Ziegowitz of Milton Revitalization Committee recommended that we substitute the brick that was already on the building where the stone is shown in the approved plan. And that is, that suggestion is fine with us, we're open to doing that, and pretty much all the other recommendations that by the revitalization committee is acceptable to us.
Okay, and --
Should we start with those?
Why don't we?
Yeah.
Want to run through them?
Do we have the building elevations or anything, so we can look at those?
No.
And you did get this letter, right, the one of April 27?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're counting on the same one.
Yes. So, the, in the arcade on the front of the building, the outer portion of it where the columns are would be trimmed out with a lifespan product, which is an engineered wood product. The interior wall on the face of the commercial space would be brick, the same brick that's on the rest of the building. The right side of the building would have brick where it's shown as stone in the approved plan, and then on the left side of the building --
Let's just take this a little slower.
Sure.
Okay, the right side elevation, those that they have plans, where the plan shows stone, that will become brick?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Is that true everywhere on the building?
With the exception of the entrance way where the elevator is on the driveway down into the rear parking lot, we're going to trim out those columns also. The interior wall will be brick.
Well, what I'm asking is just if we're substituting brick for all the stone, wherever the stone appears, this, we're, there's going to be brick?
No, we submitted a plan, I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but this week, and it basically shows all the areas of the brick, which is, it's about 90% of where the stone was, but there's a couple of areas that we changed. The columns out front, and then the columns going into the area where you enter the elevator.
I thought the columns were going to be of wood lifespan.
Yes, that's correct.
So, all columns will be the lifespan?
All the columns, including the columns down by the entrance to the elevator in the parking garage room.
Okay.
There's some stone there.
Any more?
No, those are going to be lifespan, right? Is there going to be any stone left at all?
No more stone, no.
So, it's either all going to be replaced by the lifespan or all replaced by the brick?
Do we have your agreement that you're replacing the stone with brick?
Yeah.
As shown in the plan.
No, because the original plan has the columns as stone as well, so all of the stone will be either brick or wood.
But that, that was a different stone.
Right.
It was --
Yes, so columns will all be lifespan.
Right.
And the remaining stone, the stone on the face will be brick, yeah.
I see what you were saying.
I think we should go elevation by elevation, just so we all understand what those changes are, because we don't have a plan, and I guess we submitted this week.
This is set?
Yeah. Which is why nothing, this is why we're walking on.
Here. Why don't you take that? I want you to parse this.
What are you talking about, just one moment?
Why don't we start with the right side of the building?
Okay.
This is the area where the stone was shown, and all that area will be brick. The rest of the area, as where the building will be siding, churchy siding that we use in the rest of the building.
Are you taking the siding on that far right of the right elevation? Are you taking the siding all the way down?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that part --
Foundation with siding.
Okay.
That's the one change, I guess, on that side.
Okay.
Okay, but the, the original plan did not show the siding going down to the ground?
Correct.
Siding material will go down to the ground over the foundation.
And I believe John Ziegowitz requested that, so, okay.
Okay.
Then on to the front of the building where the arcade is, basically the exterior columns and fascia boards will be the lifespan engineered trim product. The interior wall where the commercial space is will substitute the brick that's on the building from the stone that was shown there originally.
And what are you doing with the foundation on that? I know it'll probably mostly be covered up with plantings from what I remember you saying?
Yeah, it's very little. It's almost a gray down on the right side because of the ramp that's going to be there.
Okay.
And even here, there's a very small area, there'll be plantings, there'll be circular plantings and pavers, and down here, if there's a larger area exposed, we'll put brick on it.
Okay.
But it'll be pretty much covered up with plantings and existing gray.
Plantings can die, though. Plantings can die.
Be replaced, though.
Yeah, but it's going to look kind of odd if you've got brick on the parts that you can see, and then behind the plantings, it's going to be --
Well, there's an association, I'm sure they've got on the landscape, they maintain all that landscape.
All right.
Especially in the front of the building, they're not going to allow dead plants to stay there.
Uh huh.
Would be my guess. On the left side elevation, there's two front sections were stone, they will be brick now.
Okay.
The lower area where there's two open areas, and then the arch raised into the elevated garage space, those will be all trimmed out with the lifespan, everything is wood. The interior of the, it's actually a block wall on the interior, that will be all brick veneer.
Okay.
And the one other change on that would be the upper part, there's a small jog area, one story, that is commercial space, that we'd extend the siding and the water table trim through that area.
What was it shown originally?
I believe it was stone originally.
Why isn't it brick now?
I was recommended by the architect, he thought it would be a better look to it. Eni Zaleski, the project architect.
What does the board think of that?
I, I like the extending of the hardy plank on there. Just like, this is what you've got here.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you look at the front elevation, just for a second, Paul, on the far left on the lower level, oh no, that's the right, yeah, don't worry about it. Yeah, the far left on the lower level, you've got the hardy plank coming down, and then it shows lifespan. Isn't that an archway through or something? That's not a solid wall, is it?
There was kind of a, an architectural design error there that showed you'd be able to walk into that space, and it's physically not really possible to --
So, there's not going to be an arch or anything?
No, that's a --
You're just going to make that a solid wall?
It's a closed wall, yes.
And you, why would that be lifespan as opposed to continuing the brick down there?
That's actually the siding product, we could continue the siding down there.
Yeah, it's on the side of that one with the siding on it.
Yeah, we could just bring the siding down like we did on the other side over here to cover the foundation.
Where is this? Just point it out.
Is, it's, you can't really, it's the side of this, this projection here, so it's right here.
Where it goes down in terms of the arches here.
So, right down the bottom here, it, there really won't be that much exposed either.
That was going to be an open arch, but now I think maybe the siding should go on that rather than that lifespan, because it's a pretty big piece.
It's actually, I know it shows in the elevation like that, but in the reality, if the modifications that Bob's going to speak about soon on the, on the planting area is put in there, very little of this is actually going to show, but what will show on that return wall, we can bring the siding down.
Also, on the front elevation to the far right, you've got a bit that's showing a stone, I'm assuming that's going to be brick that's continued over from the right side elevation, correct?
There's a, is that what you --
Right. Okay.
This is the revised one.
That's the revised one. Yeah, that's fine. That's exactly what I was talking about, thank you.
Okay.
And then on the rear elevation, there's a few areas of block wall that we're going to cover with the siding product, and just this archway, we're going to do lifespan trim on that, so it'll be a similar arch as to the side elevation. So, no foundation would be exposed there.
Okay. Pete, can I see that one again?
Mm-hmm.
Just to make sure that I've got my notes. Yeah, it's fine. So, those are all the changes you have?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned --
On the building itself, that's the changes.
And the trim band all, all the way around will be the lifespan material, right?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
All right.
You brought Mr. Hannigan for a purpose, I assume?
Yes. To discuss the exterior, there's some modifications we'd like to suggest.
Okay, my name is Robert Hannigan, site engineer for the project, and you all have copies of the changes. And you're summarized on, on a list on the right-hand side here, and numbered, and the numbers are shown on the, on the plan. First one is on this side, originally we had showed a, a walkway with stairs. That will be replaced with a, a landscape wall and plantings along the, the building.
What's the purpose for that?
Purpose for that?
Why, why is the change being proposed?
The purpose for that is the adding, primarily the adding of the, the planting, raising the grade, adding of the planting area, and replacing the, the walkway that was on that side along the, a three-foot striped portion along the edge of the driveway outside of the, the wall.
Is there a physical reason proposing that, or is it just --
Well, there's two reasons, there's a variety of major reasons. One is the, it would reduce the amount of foundation shown to the plantings. If we step that down, put that walkway in there, there'd be a series of steps, it's not going to be a handicap accessible walkway, first of all. This is, it's quite a few steps to bring it down to grade. That would mean we'd have to drop the grade back there, instead of using the retaining wall, it'd mound it up and cover more of the foundation. We have to drop the grade all down three or four feet to create that walkway, which we didn't think would be too appealing to the building when, there's limited plantings now, and we thought more plantings on that side would, would benefit the overall view of the building. And then by moving the walkway out to the driveway, we're going to stripe and paint that area, so it would be, any handicap access would be the same as the pedestrian access, so.
Do you have enough width to make it a safe driveway and walkway for the pedestrians?
It is, it's a 20-foot wide driveway, cars typically maximum six and a half feet, so times two is 13.
But, right.
So, the 17 feet, if you deduct the, the three feet and the 20 feet, you get 17 feet, so, plus it's not a high traffic volume area anyway.
How are the sightlines?
Sorry?
Sightlines for people making that right turn in, in the same place where you might have --
Sightlines, people making the right-hand turn in, they would, they would see pedestrians as the, as the reason.
I mean, all the traffic's, I mean, crossing the sidewalk there anyways, and we already have that issue there. We, we agreed to, I believe, put mirrors, and also to stripe the whole sidewalk area and put a warning for the cars coming out of the parking lot as they come up to the sidewalks, so the cars are going to be, go pretty slow anyways coming up to the sidewalk area, and most of the people in the building are going to use the elevator and go down to the garage and go down to the parking lot. They're not going to be walking out there.
I mean, when we were working on the original plan, the notion was there'd be a driveway, then there'd be a curb, and up above the curb would be a walkway that went down so people didn't have to walk in the driveway, and I don't see any reason that that shouldn't continue to occur. In terms of the exposed foundation, that just depends how far you bring your brick material down, and it could be brick going right down to the bottom, so, you know, it just seems safer to me to have pedestrians, you know, not walking in the driveway, but walking on a walkway. And, you know, I, I thought it was proposed for some engineering reason it couldn't work or something like that, but apparently that's not the case, so.
More green space is, is one thing.
Right.
Significantly more plantings there.
Right.
There's no, there's almost a --
Low, low traffic impact.
Yeah, I think the pedestrian safety is more important from the green.
It's a 20-foot wide, I don't see it.
Well, I'm not sure that I don't think that the green may be. What would people be walking down there for? How about the people who are parking in Mr. O'Neill's building? Do they go down there?
He has a back door to his building, he anticipates, he's got a walkway that, most of those spaces were going to be used for Sullivan Insurance, and they can run out of the back of the building and go to their parking spaces, so. That, that's what I was told by Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Sullivan.
But people who want to come from the parking area into the, into the --
Commercial.
Commercial district would use this walk.
Well, they could go out the front of the building.
There would be a possibility of, of having some sort of a curb between the driveway and the, and the --
Well --
The walkway, wasn't there?
Well, that was, the original design was, instead of this wall, there was a curb, and there was a walkway above the curb, so it's like walking on a side and there was a walkway above the curb, so it's like walking on a sidewalk.
With a lot of stairs, right?
Right.
And now they're saying walk down the, walk down the driveway, and I'm just wondering whether or not you could either put a rumble strip or something into the driveway to make it, make it, uh...
Make it obvious.
Obvious.
Yeah.
It could be perhaps what we call the textured strip, uh, which we had proposed here and then will still be in, on, on the sidewalk. Do I type it down? I'll type this down and, and stripe.
What's the maintenance on the textured strip? The stripe would have to be repainted on a regular basis. What about this textured strip? How is that done?
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not sure. The architect had come up with that idea.
Okay.
It would be obviously similar material as, as we had proposed across the sidewalk.
I think something that sets it off from the driveway is a good idea.
We could, yeah, install a different textured material.
I mean, the other concern I've got about that wall, it's again another new material. It's a different color, different texture. It has nothing to do with the building. And I was, you know, when we were still talking about stone, I was thinking if there was going to be something, it should be stone to match, but now we've got another new material, which is this gray, you know, versaclock kind of wall.
Which wall is this?
This, the one they're proposing down here. It's built up there already.
I think there was a wall there. I, I don't know if it specified what the material was built on.
No, it was a curb. On the approved plan, it was a curb. This was going to be a curb on a sidewalk.
Oh, down further, there was a planting bed that was bigger.
Down, down further, right. And that, that piece still...
Do you have the...
Right.
I don't think it was specifically...
Yeah, I don't think it was...
Pointed out, uh, I, I think there would have been a smaller wall, but there would have been portions of a wall.
It was a curb on a sidewalk.
Portions of a wall. But I think it's an all-around better plan. You eliminate stairs, although it is relatively steep, steep as regards to the handicap access. It's, it's close to meeting handicap access and, and as I say, you eliminate the stairs...
Nowhere near, nowhere near meeting handicap access.
It's, it's one foot in, uh, uh...
One and twenty.
Ten and twenty.
One and twenty.
For yours. Stairs are.
No, it's, I mean, that's not accessible either.
And, and the benefit of the extra plantings and, and green space in those.
Yeah, there's, there's limited plantings on that side of the building, and we just thought, you know, as you enter and came down the driveway, it'd be nice to have, uh, you know, matching plantings on both sides of the, of the, of the entrance way.
Okay, well, I, I, I tend to agree that more planting along there is going to, is going to make it more attractive, but let's go on.
Okay. Uh, second one is, third one, sorry, it is, place the, the curved, curved line here and it's going to be a, a low-rise landscape wall, uh, portions to, to bring up the grade in this area for some plantings, uh, some forest or...
Well, if that, if that other wall stays, and I'm not convinced yet, you have these other walls, they would all match, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Use the same material.
Yeah.
And that wall doesn't show on here, on this new plan?
I think there was a wall called out on the left side in the, in the landscape plan, at least, but, but we had discussions with, you know, males about it and, uh, I still do it on the left side and then again, they wore the upper part.
Yeah, actually, there, there was, yeah. It was a little closer to the building. It was a little closer to the building. There was a curb there and there was a, the bike rack was there. What we actually proposed to do was to replace the curb with the, with the wall and bring it up a little bit further from the, from the building to, to add, add to the planting area.
Mr. O'Neill's building, uh, there's a brick foundation line, so we're going to bring, uh, it's close to grade at the upper part as you first pull in, and as you go down, uh, the split driveway, more and more foundation gets exposed. So, we're going to match the retaining wall, not exactly the same height, maybe just a little bit below that, and so the wall would get lower as, I mean, get higher as it goes down. And then we plan on top of that to cover the foundations of, of the building. So, as long as you can see the brick on there, that would be the center of it. Have you asked yourself some lighting, like, well, no lighting, landscape type lighting?
I have a, a question. It seems that, that's the north side of the building, right? Where we're talking about the driveway side is the north side. And if you make a planting area, are you going to get enough light in there for the plants to?
Well, it's northeast and, uh, the sun rises down toward Brookville, and I think in the morning there'd be some sun on, on that area.
You think that's...
The O'Neill's building's pretty low. It's not that high up, and, uh, the sun would start, rise in the east and come around the corner.
Do you have the 36 central projects, your approved ones?
Okay, continue.
All right. And, uh, in, um, raising the, the grade there, we moved the bike rack that was proposed in that area to the rear of the building underneath. There's, there's a little bit of a projection here, so that's in, in the back.
I'm not sure I agree with moving the bike rack. Uh, I think one of the advantages of having it out front is that it would be attractive for people coming to the entire commercial district. And if you're putting it back in the building, that's going to hide it from people who are coming to hopefully shop and spend some...
There is one, there is one as well.
Okay, so there were two?
Up, up on the, uh...
All right. In that case, I would withdraw that. I've forgotten about the second one.
I, I think that, yeah, that was originally on the, on the plan.
Yeah, it's not marked on what you gave us for tonight, so I forgot about that.
On the, on the second plan.
Okay.
It shows possible bike rack location on the first floor.
There it is. Okay, thank you.
You're okay?
Sorry, I missed it.
So, this plan you have is, what you're doing is showing some changes, but our operative plan is still the original one.
Yes, yeah. Below the notes here, right, this final note says, note all the other site details are, as the approved plan.
Okay.
So, this just highlights the, the changes that were requested. All right, number five is to realign the parking out in this area to better fit the site. Previously, it had been a little more straight that way, so there was a little bit of a conflict with respect to the river, so, so it's kind of bent in to provide the same number of spaces. It's just a little bit better interaction with the, with the, with the brook. Uh, realign the parking spaces, sorry, relocate, uh, there we go, number six. Okay. Realign the parking space to provide a pedestrian walk to the benches. Now, when I did the original plan, I, uh, drew it out as, I think, 99 feet, when in fact, oh, for, for 12 spaces, all you need is 96 feet. So, the way they will stripe out the spaces will be to 96 feet will be from here to here, and there'll be a proposed walkway to the, to one step up to some pavers to the, to the, to the bench locations. The bench locations were originally closer to the brook. Uh, the developers thought that in moving them out in this area, it'd have a little bit more of a, a buffer. They, they planned to do some additional plantings along there just to give a little bit of a, uh, safety issue maybe for the brook. Um, also, the, the reason why we proposed this walk, striped walkway here was on the original plan, it showed access closer to the tree. There would be some, a walkway in here. There'd be additional grading, so we're eliminating, we're trying to minimize the grading around the, uh, our saved 15-inch American sycamore. Uh, so that's really the justification or the rationalization for that particular move.
How many benches, Bob? How many benches?
Two benches, two benches. You can see on the, on the old plan, the, uh, there was this area, there was work in this area for the, for the walk. So, what we did is we, we, actually, we realigned the, the wall here out a little bit away, away from the tree, put the walk in, in here, eliminated this, this grading in, in this area.
They also pulled it back for safety reasons. They had the benches pretty close to the edge before, and when you get to spring and fall, when they do have rains, that water goes through there pretty quick. Um, in the summertime, it may be very low, but in the spring, it gets up a lot higher. After a storm, it comes up a lot higher. We wanted to bring it back away from the edge a little bit more for safety factor also.
Continue. All right. Uh, next one is to, um, add a landscape wall from the corner of the building to corner of the garage on the adjoining property and just to maintain the, the integrity of the, of the finished grade around the, around the, uh, sycamore tree. Okay. Uh, number 10, right in here, we had originally proposed some, uh, concrete pads for the condensers. They're three foot by, two three-foot by eight-foot pads. Uh, those will be eliminated. The, the condensers are all on the roof, so there'd be additional, uh, flexibility in, in that location. Okay. Uh, part of the agreement with the, with the neighbor is to repave the area in here for better access to the, to the parking in the rear and the garage. And so, there'd, also, there'd be a slight raise in the grade to, to meet the, the emergency exit door here and just to repave the entire, entire parking area. Uh, not shown on the plan, it's off-site, is to put in some drainage to, to handle the, the surface runoff that comes down, uh, down the driveway. Right now, there is no, no drainage. It will be some, something to collect the stormwater runoff and recharge it into the ground. And, uh, the final one is, is to modify the ramp in, in front. Originally, there was a question as to the handicap access. I think the ramp went something like that. I can't remember exactly how the architect had it, but, but right now, the grade is direct from, from the sidewalk up to the, to the open, open area there. That allows for more plantings in the front as well.
It, it's not the existing pavers that are there. That's a temporary situation for open houses.
Could you say that the, it eliminates the need for, or the entrance to the...
No, there will be a ramp there.
But the entrance to the...
The entrance, uh, it won't be as, the, the ramp won't need to be as long.
Doesn't wind.
Right, didn't wind. It would, I can't recall the exact way that it, it worked. I think it started down here and then it rose up like that, but right now, it's just a more direct and less of a ramp and more plantings in the front, in that area.
Okay, those are the changes that you are proposing, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And there are no other changes?
No, that's all of my belief.
Going once, going twice.
Well, can I ask you a question? Neither the architectural elevations or the site plans show the planters that were supposed to be on the back side of the building. So, are you proposing removing those? Are they still part of the plan?
Here?
Yes.
Here and here?
Yeah.
Uh, I think that would fall under the category of any of the site details that aren't shown on, on here will, will remain, so...
Right.
Okay, so those are going to be part of the plan.
So, yeah, so those, those will remain.
Okay.
Questions by the board?
Lots. We just see this for the first time tonight, and, and we never discussed these kind of changes. It was just going to be building material changes. So, I, I like the building material changes as proposed and the plan that they submitted that we didn't get a copy of. Um, you know, and as we went through, I've got no problem with them, and I'd encourage them to work, you know, forthwith to get those changes incorporated and get the building done. And I'm anxious to get the barrier away from the street and all things like that. In terms of the site changes, I need more time to review them before I'm ready to, to express an opinion on them.
So, you are suggesting that we bifurcate our...
Well, I don't know that we want to issue two amendments, you know, but I, I mean...
We've already issued...
Well, the previous ones.
Two or three amendments.
Right.
I think three amendments. Uh, what's it, two more?
Well, you know, I mean, it seemed to me, I mean, next building, well, I don't know. I just haven't, this is the first time we've seen these, and there are certainly things that I have to understand better and would do better on these.
Well, and they also need additional things like what they've proposed to plant in this planting area.
Yeah.
I think, you know, that would be important because if it's, uh...
Right. But I, but I don't want to hold them up initiating the work on the building according to this new scheme because I think everybody's on board on that, and I want them to keep going on their building and as you do. Um, but I'm just not ready to, you know, to address these issues.
All right, well, let's, let's hear from the public, uh, because the public will probably help us resolve it. Who would like to be heard?
Uh, I'd like Margaret Donovan, Callahan Central Avenue. I have a few questions and then I'd like to...
Okay, would you come over and, and, so we, they can't hear you on, without a microphone.
Unless you want to grab that mic and bring it over to your seat, Margaret. Especially for you.
Thank you. It would have been helpful if they had brought the plan in color. Um, it's hard to imagine. Could we please go back to this, um...
No, there is that.
Could we please go back to this? This is the only copy?
Yeah.
Okay. The front, front, front elevation. Looking at the front elevation, it's my understanding from your explanation that the brick veneer that's on the second and third floor will be brought down to the first floor along the wall of the, of the building.
Yes, all on the commercial.
Right, okay. What I did not understand was your explanation for what I would call the porch covering. Right now, there's, there's just, I guess you'd call them stanchions. Is the porch covering going to be what you brought to the planning board at a previous meeting?
Yes, it's got the same material and the same cogs that were there.
Same, oh, sorry.
They had to change the pipe, and that's why they took it apart and put it back, and put it back together, definitely, well. It'll be the same as the sample called, the lockup color we had.
Okay.
The arches, the same four arches, the same, same style of, of, you showed in the sample.
All right. The third question I have is on the emergency exit. Um, is it going to, uh, happen that condominium owners will be able to use that emergency exit to come around, make a shortcut, get out, use the 42 driveway? How is that...
No, they, they can't go on the driveway. They have no exit to the driveway. They, they won't have to step on the driveway. There's a path to the rear of the building.
There's a path to the rear of the building, and there's, there's no need to step on the driveway of 42 Central. The door doesn't swing out to the driveway, doesn't, so, and there's, there's a widened up path all the way back. And quite frankly, I don't know why anybody would want to go down, down that end of the building and go out that way when it's easier to go down the elevator on the other side.
So, what will be the purpose of the emergency exit and how will it be accessed?
It's required, required by state code to have that emergency access.
So, it, so it can be, it'll be open, it'll be available, and, and they'll be able to use it. Because it's still, even as an emergency, then they would have to use 42 unless they were to turn around.
Why would they use it? They're not going to go on 42. They're going to stay on the property of the 36 central building.
Well, in an emergency situation, we won't...
Well, in an emergency situation, we want them out and safe and I don't care if they use 42 or wherever they go in an emergency situation. Get them out of the building and that's what that's for. It's not to be an active daily used thing. It's only an emergency access. I don't know if they're, if the lock mechanism on it or what the lighting and the signage will say, I'm assuming it will say emergency use only and, you know, something to protect that. But, you know, an emergency is an emergency.
Obviously, we can't block it otherwise.
Safety, no, absolutely, and safety of the people is what's important.
Right.
So I still don't see where they would go if they can't use 42 because it's?
They would go on 42.
And what use?
If there's a fire in the building, we want to get them out and away from the building as fast as they can.
They would go on 42.
The door here, there was a question from the abboter whether the door, when it was open, was on his property and we measured that, we looked at it, and it is not. It's on 36th Central property and the official emergency access route is to the rear along the edge of the building. But as Peter said, you know, if there's an emergency, if there's a fire, then you just go where you go. There are no rights, day in and day out, to go onto 42.
All right.
But it's easy enough to say the emergency exit is for emergency use because it is.
And it'd be signed only, emergency use only. You see those in commercial, you know, all over the place that says emergency exit and that's? And they're usually alarms.
Yeah, that signage is required.
Then if it's an alarm, if an alarm goes off and they open the door, then people aren't going to use it every day, you know.
Sure.
Well, if I may continue, I'd like to go over there.
Just so you've got a microphone.
Okay.
Take your microphone with you when you go to the?
I have one.
What?
Oh.
The elevation you want to see or?
No, that's okay. I have to say that?
No, I don't recall if you introduced yourself.
I did, but when I was over there.
Okay.
But you'd like me to introduce myself again for the thousandth time, I wasn't happy to do that. Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. I have to say that I am pleased that they are going to change that stone or whatever it was going to be to brick, to leave what's on the second and third floor. I think that will make the building look more streamlined, more aesthetically beautiful. When I say half a loaf, that porch column from my window, I need sunglasses, I should have brought them, to look at them because it's so white. They don't say it's white, it's so white. If it were painted to match the putty above the window, the putty color above the window on the, the two floors that are brick, I think it would tone it down. Other than that, I'm pleased with the building. Thank you.
Well, there are lots of brick buildings which have bright white paint. And this is actually an off-white that they're proposing. I mean, colonial architecture, they like that. It may be the Williamsburg sort of influence.
Federalist.
In any event, if any, there is a precedent and it isn't as bright white as it could
It does look like a building on North Main Street. That's a commercial building that has a similar shape on the porch and it just screams out. It takes away from the beauty of the design of that building. And I have to say that the design of the building is very, very attractive. It was the combinations of the colors that was making it so unattractive. I think that brick coming down to the first floor will correct that deficiency, shall we say.
Okay.
And I hope that the board does approve the board.
Okay, thank you. Who else wants to be heard?
Louise Valveras, I live on Brookside Park. The issue that I'd like to bring up, since you brought up landscaping, is the landscaping along Brookhill Road. Last fall, very late last fall, the landscape brought in a dozen or so pots, all different kinds of pots with plants in them. They all died over the winter. They're still all dead right there on Brookhill Road in the area. Nothing has been done. The Conservation Commission met with us several times. That was part of their agreement. Also, the agreement for that Stucco house that's there with the piece of eve that's hanging down, Paul agreed that all of that would be taken care of. He was going to paint the house, he was going to fix the eve, the gutter that was hanging down. Nothing has been done. I want to know when that's done.
Now, it seems to me that we put Mr. Clark in charge of this. And so, how about it, Mr. Clark? What's the story?
I actually met with the developer like two weeks ago. I have an appointment with one of the Conservation Commission members to go out there and, you know, look at the invasives, cut those out and redo the planting plan. And dead plants don't mean anything because Mr. Sullivan will give me live ones as soon as?
Why do they leave the dead ones there all winter? Why did they put them there in the first place? Was it to fool us that we thought you were going to put them in?
He thought he was going to get them in. He didn't get them in. He'll get live ones. He doesn't get signed off until he gets a live one.
It looks like the town dump at this point.
All right, well, we don't want it to look like the town dump.
All right, now, I don't want to be argumentative.
Okay.
But as a longtime member of the Council on Aging Board and as a former chairperson of the board when this building was being built, if you'd like something back here, please bring a backdrop to cover it. We don't have enough room in this building for the seniors as it is, so we can't move things out that are behind here.
I was thinking we might move the flags over there.
You could do anything you want.
All right, who else would like to be heard? Okay, no one else wants to be heard. We're going to, it seems to me, we either bifurcate or we don't. And I think that we bifurcate and give an approval for the building. And we will do the rest of it in due course.
Is that a motion, Mr. Jim?
No, I think that what I would like to do is this. I'd like to?
I'd like to bifurcate.
What I would like to do is I would like someone who understands what all the changes are to write up what the changes are that we're approving. And I'm happy to put it into the form of amendment, but I'm not entirely sure. I fully follow everything that's being done, but I want to get it properly stated. And then I would like to?
Maybe take five minutes to restate it here.
Well, no, it has to be written down.
I don't mind writing it down.
But writing it down, get it to me and then, you know, it would be possible perhaps that we could have something by our next meeting on the 5th.
Alex.
Yes.
And Bob, what do they want to?
What?
What does it bother me?
Well, because, you know, if they had a, well, I don't know. I've got a volunteer here.
I'll do it.
And volunteers shouldn't be?
Come cheaply.
Volunteers shouldn't be discouraged.
[laughing]
So get me, get me, but that's what I would like to do. And we can vote that we support bifurcation and approval with a written, a written, a written plan. But I'm not sure we have to vote because, is anyone unagreeable to approve? I think that everyone wants to get this change approved.
So they can get their hammers out tomorrow and that wagon?
Well, I mean, they know that we're going to approve it. We just have to put it in a form that it's enforceable. I mean, it's like those pots with the dead plants in them. If we didn't have an enforceable special permit, who knows what might happen? So we want to get something done right. Get that to me and with any luck, we'll have something by next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We got any other site modifications that we requested?
Yeah.
Is there any additional you need to make a decision on that?
Well, we want, Mr. Jackson will specify what else, what else is needed. We certainly need a planting plan for your new planting areas. We want to know what you're, what you're going to put in. And so that in our special permit amendment, we can say, this is what you put in and this is what you will keep alive. So, but Mr. Jackson will, as the board's, does he, do we, does the board feel that desigting Mr. Jackson as to possible petitions in the plan is a good plan? Yes?
So he has been volunteered?
I'd like to see what the final?
Oh, 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 no, I know. They would, he would simply tell them what to put in the plan and then they'll bring the plan back and we'll, I mean, we commit to nothing.
I agree.
We do eventually commit to something.
Okay. So that's how we're going to do it. Does that, does that?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, that's fine. I just want to make a point that we have quite a few of the units under agreement and that we have to deliver them by late June. And the plantings for the green area along the brook have been ordered. They're coming in a couple of weeks and so when we plant that area, we'll do the planting across the brook on the other side too, once it's determined what is going to be planted over there. So if we could come to the next meeting and maybe?
Well, the next meeting, we're going to spend on 131 Elliott Street. And we committed that we're not going to, we're not going to schedule a lot of other stuff. But the 12th, we will give you, the 12th is when we're going to, what?
On the 3rd? Do it before town meeting?
No.
To get this done?
I don't, I think that this will take some time.
I don't have time to do that. It's like we do.
We'll do it on the 12th. We're going to, what we're doing is we're working quite hard to get them their building permission. And then we will do the rest. And it will be on the 12th and we will, with any luck, give you a verbal approval there subject to a written, another written decision.
6:45 on the 12th? Put them first thing?
Is that right, Bill? 6:45 on the 12th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will we get these documents before the 12th?
I certainly hope so.
Make approval faster, yeah.
The amended site plan. The site plan with whatever else is necessary, and it may not be anything else, well, I mean, some things are necessary. We do want a planning schedule. And we want it, if you get it to us before the 12th, that will be good because if it looks, looks great, we can, we can hopefully advance it quickly. Okay.
Thank you.
So, next week, we're going to try and give you your?
Finish, finish everything. So 17?
Okay, only half an hour late, 17 Canton Avenue.
Good evening, I'm Attorney Bob Shephiel and I represent the owner of 17 Canton Avenue. At the last meeting of the planning board, there was an approval in?
Principle.
Principle of the development. There are a couple of items that were requested. One is information on lights, lighting. We showed samples, but there needs to be a list of the?
Thank you.
That the board can?
Approve.
Keep in its files.
Even got the print the same.
Is that other sheet you've got their pictures of these or?
Pardon me?
Is that other the pictures of these?
These are the pictures. I only have one. I wasn't able to make multiple copies of all of them. But these are essentially the pictures and these are as were shown at the meeting two weeks ago. Another question that came up was the landscape plan. And the only landscape plan that we have is the landscape plan that is dated January 3rd. And then we also provided a schedule of trees, shrubs, perennial and ground cover, which the board has in its files.
Is that the overall plant material list?
Yes, it is.
Or is that something? Okay.
And?
I guess the problem we had with this plan is that the building addition shown on this plan isn't the same footprint as the current building addition.
That is, that is correct.
And there's also walkways, so, you know, there would be a different planting plan that would have to be done for the?
The landscape plan is essentially unchanged. The building that is going to be outside of is slightly altered in the revised layout plans, et cetera.
Right.
But the landscape materials in the landscape plan, that is the latest version that we have and is substantially correct and complete.
Well, it's not, I hate to be a noob, but the, there are areas here that don't show any planting where obviously there needs to be planting. The building shape and size is different. When the new walkway comes around, there's foundation plantings that go around the end of the building that aren't shown here. It just shows grass up to the base of the building, so I just don't think it's the same plan.
Okay, then why don't we put in the decision that revision of the landscape plan will be submitted to the, to the board?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'd like the plan that you've got here, it's just that there's some areas that aren't covered, so if we, if we did that, that's fine.
As long as we work on page one, we can still sign this. Do people have the proposed, you've seen the proposed decision?
Yes, I have.
Okay. On the second paragraph where we say an overall plant material list dated March 22nd, 2011 was also presented.
Put an additional sentence there that a revised landscape plan will be filed with the board?
I was, it seems to me, it only, we better put it in the third paragraph because we can't really incorporate something that hasn't been.
Okay, fine.
Let me just see if I can't? Let me just see if I can't...
You do have the final sentence of the third paragraph that might be slightly altered.
Right. Landscaping...
A revised landscape plan.
Landscaping in such event will be, as shown on a revised landscaping plan, approved by the board.
You could even say submitted to the board instead of approved by.
It's a plain straight.
Well, maybe we'll put in the second paragraph. Further landscaping plan will be submitted... And become, will said landscaping sheet. Sheet will be submitted by applicant and become part, what? Part of the plans upon approval by the board. Okay, what I want to, what I want to say, have people looked at the proposed decision?
Yep.
Yes.
On page one, second paragraph, what, on two lines up where it says, dated 1311, revised with a blank, we're just going to put a period after 1311, 1-3-11. Take out the word revised. And then after the sentence, "An overall plant material list dated March 22nd is also presented," we're going to say, "A further landscaping sheet will be submitted by applicant and become part of the plans upon approval by the board." We have, as you see, the, the lighting fixtures, we have the list of lighting fixtures, which the decision calls for. We have the provision for the retaining wall being maintained in good condition. So, what does the board think?
Now...
Yes?
Pardon me. I've looked at that retaining wall.
Yeah.
Pardon me. I'd like a statement by an engineer stating that it is in good condition at the moment. I thought you, I thought perhaps you looked at it, too. And rather than have it be maintained in good condition, I'd like it to be stated by a professional that it is in good condition.
Well, who owns the wall, Mr. Chairman? Is it the town or is it coincidental with the sideline or...
My research indicates that it's owned by the property owner.
I believe it's owned by the property owner and the property owner has already indicated that he will do anything necessary to keep that in good repair. It may be in, in relatively good repair now, but it's not acceptable to the owner and the owner plans to improve it. And we spoke of that at the last meeting.
I don't think it's in good repair. I think it should be, a statement from an engineer should state, say that it is in good repair or say what has to be done to put it in good repair now before we sign this permit.
I, I think that might be kind of productive insofar as regardless of the condition it's in now, it is going to be in good repair. And this decision that you'd be signing makes that an absolute requirement.
I'm wondering if anybody else has seen the wall other than me?
I didn't specifically take a look at it.
I haven't had a chance to see it.
I think you should.
We do require in the decision that it be maintained in good repair.
The building was built in 1831. I don't know when the wall went up, but the wall needs some work.
Yeah, it's obvious that it needs work.
I guess the question is whether we require the work to be done now or, you know, 20 years from now, they may do it.
It's already in the decision that the retaining wall will be kept in good repair.
But, right, no, it's not in good repair.
We can say shall be put and kept in good repair.
Rather than maintained, yes, fine.
But we still don't have the review of a professional.
Well, the building inspector is, has the sort of final word.
And he'll be required to enforce this permit? Approval, rather.
I won't sign it unless we have a professional tell us that it's in good repair.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do because I don't want to hold up this approval for something that could have been demanded earlier. And maybe it was. I know you, you raised it, but I don't know that, the board certainly didn't tell the developer that without a, an engineer's advice, the board wouldn't act on it.
Bob, can I just ask a housekeeping thing? On the application for this, the name of the owner, Am Sims, is all in caps as if it's the, whatever that's called? Or is it a word, A, small m, S.I.M.?
As in most cases, it's in the, the name of all the children that...
Oh, it's an acronym.
Our...
Acronym, that's it. Is it an acronym?
Yes.
So, in our thing is that those should all be capitalized?
Yes, it should be.
With periods?
No, they don't have...
Don't have to have periods, but it should be cap.
No, they don't have to be. But it, it's fine as it is.
We have to change that page.
Well, we're going to...
Okay, if you're going to change the page anyway, it's all caps in the LLC.
Right.
Okay.
Am Sims, comma, LLC, okay. Oh...
And then after a science as well?
All right. So, that's in paragraph one and paragraph two.
I think the only, we don't mention them on page two.
I don't believe we do, no. I think we're set.
We do like to be correct on the planning board.
Dot those i's and cross those t's.
Okay, so, three capital Am Sims.
Right.
And I've, I've, I've used the word shall. A further landscaping sheet shall be submitted by applicant and shall become part of the plans upon approval by the board. And then I think that we should provide that the retaining wall surrounding part of the site shall be put and kept in good repair.
Also, three lines down, second paragraph, Massachusetts should be capital N, capital A, after Milton.
Well, actually, if you look at, if you look at what they put in their plan, you'll see that it was capital M, small a.
So, we're going to perpetuate the error.
This is simply what they did. But you, you are right, there has to be a parenthesis, a, a, end quotes after the small a, so...
I didn't realize I was right about that, but that's good to know.
Okay. Any other housekeeping items, Mr. Sheffield?
No, I think you did an excellent job in the drafting of it and I think we resolved the opened issues.
Okay, well, we're going to see how we do if we have a motion to, this is site plan approval, so we only need three votes.
That's correct. So, I will move the, the document as amended.
I'll second it.
You're, you're moving to give site plan approval to the application as provided in the document.
That's exactly what I just said. Only I added "as amended."
And you seconded that, again? All right, discussion. Okay, no one...
Say your line of point. The list of...
Lighting fixtures?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have the pictures that go with these so that we know what we're looking at.
He's going to give you the pictures. The pictures of the lighting fixtures.
I know.
Yes, I will give them to you.
Yep, so I can attach it to this.
Right. And then this...
Attach to this.
Right. Okay.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Now, we need some pages to sign.
If I can give the second half of mine.
I will give you one of my pages because we're, the first page is going to be changed.
It's the second one. The put and kept is in the second.
It's, no, we're putting the put and kept in the first, first one.
So, it's not to have to change the second one?
And we're not, the second one was, was...
We're going to perpetuate it.
We're not going to perpetuate it. We're, we're going to leave the second page alone. But we're not going to sign your, all right. Emily says that she's going to sign the second line.
Bite into signing the second line.
I'll sign the third.
Bob, I would like you to tell the owner that, you know, about the wall, that our, our concern is that some action be taken now, that it's not be, you know, felt that it's in okay condition. So, then as part of this construction...
I will make that clear and...
Look at it for, you know, at least repointing and, and, you know, whatever it takes to put it in good condition.
And we're going to, we're going to tell the building commissioner that...
That's part of the project.
It was very well-stable.
It was very well-stable, Diane.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I think three copies will be fine. This is what the first page is going to be when you file it. This is capital A.M.S.I.M.S., comma, capital, capital, end quotes. Take out the word "provide," put a period, and then add this sentence at the end. Add that. Okay? And that's the, that's the decision we will deliver to the county clerk. And before, send that to me by email and send Mr. Sheffield a copy of that first page.
Okay.
How do we know there's two pages in the document? They're not numbered. Page one of two and two of two? The other attorney.
I would say that on the first page, you can say, page one of two. Just at the bottom, one of two, but don't, we're not changing the second page. 310 Granite Avenue, we're going to continue a hearing. Are we continuing, we, the hearing?
Yes, we continued it.
We're continuing a hearing on an amended site plan approval for Milton Gas. And...
Do you want to put this up in easy? So that thousands of people can see it.
Two weeks ago, we discussed this and we had our consensus that, first of all, the, the pumps should be located further away from the parking. And secondly, that the 13 parking spaces that were approved in 2007 should remain unchanged. I was asked to draft an amendment that the board could sign to approve the application. And I rigidly followed the 2007 list of conditions. And number one modification would be to specify the tank that's going in and that was approved in 2007 as being a 10,000 gallon tank, half of which would be containing diesel fuel, the other half containing regular gas. The second item would be a modification to condition number four, which authorized the increase from three pumps and a larger canopy to four pumps and a larger canopy. And also to require the positioning of the new pumps no less than six feet closer to Wood Street than shown on the plan that was provided to the planning board. Also, we would look at the minimum size canopy that would provide for the adequate safety fire suppression equipment being installed there. And if it could be made smaller than the 36.7 feet by 48.7 feet, we would reduce it in, in size to the extent possible, but it'd be no larger than what was shown. And then, number three makes it absolutely clear that the number of parking spaces will not be reduced in any way by this modification. And number four indicates that all terms and conditions of the site plan approved in 2007 remain in full force and effect.
Condition number four?
Yes.
Does not authorize the replacement of the pumps. That's also condition number three, at least the document that's in front of me. Condition number three is, covers both the storage tank and the pumps. At least that's the one that Ed signed in 2007.
Okay, so, in that, number two should also reference condition number three. Thank you, they were correct on that.
I figured it was just a typo.
Yep. Call it human error.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question in number two. Since the pumps will not, will be located not less than six feet closer to Wood Street, so that would mean that... So that would mean that a pump could be located six feet away from the sidewalk.
Well, I, I had in there originally, and I took it out, uh, no less than six feet, not, not more than 10 feet, if that, um, were, that degree of control wanted to be retained. Uh, I think the idea was to move it a short distance over, uh, to the north, um, for, uh, the parking spaces and accommodate the...
Let's go back to the sidewalk. So you are still saying it will be six feet from the sidewalk?
I'm saying what?
That it will be six feet, not more than six feet away from the sidewalk.
Not less than?
It can't be closer than six feet to the sidewalk?
No, it says that, that it will be moved six feet closer to Wood Street.
I'll try it again, Bob.
Yeah.
The sidewalk is part of Wood Street?
Yes.
Okay. So the pump could be six feet away from the sidewalk?
Six feet closer than it is on this drawing.
That's correct. Six feet closer than it is on the drawing that was submitted.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That the board felt that...
So it can't be moved.
That it should be closer...
Oh, I got you, got you.
To Wood Street, yeah.
Okay, got you.
I, um, bumped into somebody the other day who was concerned that this might increase the amount of traffic, uh, going along the street, and I promised to raise that issue, so...
I don't think it will have any material impact on the total traffic going down Granite Avenue. I, I, I think that what it will do, though, is it will permit the traffic that's going down Granite Avenue that wants to enter the station to, uh, enter more efficiently, effectively, and, and get out of there quicker. So, if anything, it will have a beneficial effect insofar as there won't be cars lined up going down the Granite Avenue. So I think it'll be a, an improvement, but not a significant improvement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I also had some people come to me on various matters, pardon me. One person came relative to signage, and stated that, in his opinion, and I agree with him, there should be no writing on the canopy of any sort, any signage or any writing of any sort on the canopy, which is the same condition that we have on the gas station a few feet, a few hundred feet away, which is a, that was a site plan approval application. So I would, once again, ask the board to consider this, that we insert language, same language as we have for the other gas station. There shall be no signs or writing on the canopy. I would appreciate the support of the board on this matter.
I, I would request that we go by the, um, existing signed bylaw, and that, uh, if we want to outlaw certain types of signs, we do it in the bylaw rather than piecemeal on a sign, on site plan approval.
I would suggest that it was extremely effective for the other gas station. People comment on it, it looks clean, and that's what I would ask the board to, uh, support me on this item. No signs on the canopy.
I think there's very significant competition between the two gas stations, and, uh, I think the competition is good for the townspeople of Milton. One, um, gas station called itself Milton Gas, uh, and the gas station 200 feet away tried to cause confusion by calling themselves Milton Fuel. Uh, and, um, I, I don't think the planning board should, uh, get, uh, should address that point i- in this site plan review.
We, it was very effective in the previous application for the other gas station. It looks clean. It is admirable to see something that's done the right way. I'd appreciate the support of the board in this, in this matter.
I think our experiences with this gas station owner have been very favorable. He has improved the condition, he wants to keep it clean, he wants to keep it, uh, efficient, effective. He has a very good reputation in town, he is a supporter of the neighbors and the butters. Mr. Thomas came in and spoke very highly of him two weeks ago, and, um, he, I think we should restrict the, the modifications to what was in the application.
Did he obtain a, uh, site, a signed permit for the signage that's on the building?
The signage that was on the building...
That is on the building now, did he obtain a permit for that?
Um, I, I think that this gas station was founded in 1946, and, um, was, uh, we didn't have a, a signed bylaw at that point.
The signage on the building now, which apparently was put up by the current owner, did he obtain a permit for that?
I don't know.
Does Mr. Clark know that answer?
He did.
For the signage on the building?
The signs on the building were a permit. The original sign for the Milton Gas was before me, but that went through sign review.
Okay. But, uh, I would once again say, the gas station 250 feet away or so, by this board, we agreed not to put signage on the canopy. The canopy is clean, the station has a clean appearance. I don't see why this gas station should be any different.
Well, we did issue, I guess, this site plan approval document isn't signed by the board, and no vote is reflected.
I thought we gave, uh, it's signed by Ed, and I thought we gave him the authority to sign it.
I don't think that we can do that, but, uh, in any event, it doesn't mention the canopy being, having no signs on it.
I'm not sure what you said, Ed.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to come in, I think I'd like to support, Ed, the latest gas station right in that area that we did. We did restrict the signage so that it isn't on the canopy. I think this station, you know, with this approval, which he hasn't even completed the improvements from the last approval, and now he's, it's in essence, a, an amendment of the earlier approval, because it's still in process. He's already getting a competitive advantage of a fourth pump instead of three pumps. He's getting the opportunity to sell diesel, where the other one has a diesel, so in terms of competitive advantage, and I think, you know, if we restrict one in terms of his advertising by not making the canopy available for that, I think it's only fair that, for the aesthetics of the area, that we continue kind of that design motif as we approve something that's only, you know, a few hundred feet down the road. How they advertise and how they compete with each other is their business, but I think...
You're saying it isn't their business, it's our business.
No, but aesthetically, I think it's consistent, I think it's consistent. But we did put it in the last, um, the last site plan review we did, we specifically had a condition...
They said they didn't want to have signs on their canopy.
No, we...
The last time. I think we requested that.
I don't think we did.
Yes, we do.
In any event, I think that this is a matter for the sign review committee, and I, I think that it's, uh, rather business unfriendly to, uh, just out of thin air come up with a notion that, uh, signs on the canopy should be prohibited. I think that if we were suggesting that they should be prohibited, we should, um, advise the owner that, uh, we will have to have a hearing on, um, gas station. I mean, the, the business may rely on a sign, just saying you can't have a sign on the canopy is, I, I think, a little, uh...
But we did that on the last site plan approval for the gas station.
I believe we asked, yes, Mr. Clark?
I believe that you got the no sign on the canopy from the special permit from the zoning board of appeals decision.
No.
It was in their decision that no signs...
Let's, let's find out. It's my understanding that, I was the proponent for, for it, so my understanding was done by this board and this board only, if I'm not mistaken. Be that as it may, I, I, I once again say, I move that we put language in this approval that there shall be no signs or writing on the canopy.
This is a site plan approval, I think that this goes way beyond what site plan approval. We're, we're taking over the function of the sign review committee on site plan approval. And, and we have a sign review committee, I think site plan approval assumes that they will make the decision on signs. Not us, I mean, if this were a special permit...
That would be one thing.
Yes, we could do it, but on a site plan approval, I don't, I totally disagree that we, we should, uh, we should start telling them what their signs look like.
I agree that a cleaner canopy would be something that would be more attractive for the neighborhood. However, the sign review committee is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, and we have discussed with them in the past, uh, putting, um, signs under our authority, under special permit, in site plan approval, and they have not been interested in doing that. And so, in deference to their role as, uh, the people who oversee the sign review committee, I don't see how we can do this.
Well, then, I, I mean, I think I've got two approaches then. One would be to confirm whether we put that condition in the last gas station we approved, and if we did, then we should consider putting it here. Or, and an alternative would be that the board, um, would prepare a letter to the sign review committee asking that when they review new signage for this, that, that we would like them to consider not permitting sign, um, signage or lettering on the canopy consistent with the gas station, that whatever the, address is there, 256 or whatever.
I think that would be with, absolutely within our jurisdiction to do that, the latter option. That would have, we've written to other boards before when we've had a, a question.
Just to be consistent, I think, you know, I think consistency is, is an important thing.
Yeah, if we as a board decide that's important.
I think consistency is very important, however, I think, uh, just because you make one mistake, doesn't mean that you should continue it.
Well, my recollection is that they agreed that they didn't want to have...
Yeah, that's mine as well.
Writing, that's my distinct recollection. I don't think that we ever would have done it if, uh, they had opposed it. It seems to me that, uh, the problem which we may have here is that they had some elevations which had Milton Gas scratched on the canopy, and it was unattractive. But, you know, calligraphy can be done, I mean, and it's, an announcement of what the building, you, you see it, it...
That was not well rendered.
It isn't, and it, on their rendering, it's not an attractive sign, but there is no reason they can't make something that is just as, uh, consistent with, uh, a business district as a blank, empty canopy.
And whatever it is, it's not within our jurisdiction.
And I would agree with that.
Well, how about the, the Welcome to Milton stone? Should we refer that to the sign committee too?
Yeah, that's actually not within our jurisdiction either.
Okay.
And I was thinking that we, that is a good idea, it is a good idea to refer it to them, because it could, it could be quite, it could be well done, or it could be badly done. And I think that, um, it, it needs, uh, review.
I would ask, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Clark would go back to the 2007, uh, packet bill and find out how we did it in 2007, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The stone?
The stone was not proposed in 2007.
Right, when the stone was, the stone was proposed to the selectmen at the, uh, they have, they had to go before the selectmen for a tank. And when they did it, when they went before them with the tank, they said, "What we'd like to do is, since the stone isn't on the other side of the street anymore, we would like to take and put the stone on our property, we'd like to put it here." And they asked the selectmen if that would be all right, and...
The selectmen seemed to be quite pleased with the idea brought up, whether, uh, it needed to go before a sign committee, and I indicated that it did, and they said, "Well, we'll be looking forward to, uh, hearing from the sign committee on that."
Who was certain that it reads "Welcome to Milton"? Are you certain that it reads that way?
What?
Are you, are you certain that the stone reads that way, "Welcome to Milton"?
It doesn't exist right now.
What are you talking about?
It's proposed.
Across the street, you're saying the stone across the street?
There used to be a stone in that area, and now they, they want to put this one in.
Yeah, they don't compare, there's no comparison between the two stones, though.
And I think that the sign committee should, should, uh, review that.
I think we...
I think it's a nice idea, but I think it's their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
I think we've obligated our responsibility here, but two other, uh, a few other people came to me, Mr. Chairman, who were neighbors, and both of them were concerned with the increase in traffic, especially on Wood Street with the children and so forth, and, um, uh, and the hours, from six o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night, and the, uh, the pumping and the addition of diesel. So I cite these as not being friendly to the neighborhood, and, uh, so I would, uh, ask that, um, people regard this in that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As I recall, we asked about, uh, making this a bank of two pumps. We asked whether or not it was in accordance with good planning practices for, uh, for the amount of space that's available, and we asked for some expert opinion as to that. And we also asked whether or not the canopy could be taken in from the street.
From the sidewalk. What? From the sidewalk.
From the sidewalk, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
In from the street and the sidewalk. And, uh, so that's, those questions are outstanding.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just...
Well, I think in the, uh...
One thing, Mr. Sheffield, um, the selectmen have approved an additional, uh, they've approved, uh, the installation of a 10,000 gallon gasoline tank, split in two, five gallons for gas, and, and, 5,000 gallons for gas and 5,000 gallons for diesel. So they, they have approved...
They have approved that, yes.
They have approved it, now, they have a public hearing and all this type of thing.
I bet they had the public hearing, they put the advertisement in, they said certified letters.
For the tank, not for the, not for the placement of the pumps, they, they said that's for the planning board to determine. And the canopy. But I, I mean, last time, we specifically said, is, when you're double tiering these, um, gas pumps, is there enough room to do it?
Should the building inspector be the one that...
Well, we asked that, we asked to get some, just advice that this was in conformance with proper gas station planning. That's what we requested. And we requested whether or not the canopy could be bumped back from the sidewalk because of the fact that it is so close right now.
It's actually hanging over the signboard.
Well, okay, so those were the questions that we had outstanding, they're still outstanding, and...
Do we have answers?
Yes, I, I have answers. Number one is that there is adequate size to have the four pumps with the, uh, cars going on both sides. That, uh, there is, uh, uh, room for the canopy. The canopy will not overhang the sidewalk in any way, shape, or form. And the canopy will be reduced in size if it can be, if it can be done so. And in my draft, um, I indicated that it would not be any larger than that shown, but it, it could come in smaller if it could be removed further away from the sidewalk and still have a canopy, uh, which would contain all the required safety apparatus in it.
The fire suppression.
That's correct.
You provided us last time with the diagram of the, showing the sort of reflective plan of the canopy, of the columns and where the pumps are, and looking at the site plan that you gave us, the... you gave us, the pumps look fairly, the columns aren't on the site plan, but the pumps are, and the pumps look fairly close to those parking spaces. And I'm wondering, without being able to tell, you know, because they're not the same scale, but sort of guesstimating where the columns may be, is there enough room for the cars to be able to turn into and back out of those spaces with the columns?
Yes, there will be. There will be, and by shifting the pumps in the canopy further away from that.
Okay.
That will not be a problem.
Okay, and I noticed also the plan that you gave us, I believe I've counted 11 spaces on here, but you are committed to keeping the full 13 that we originally approved?
That is correct.
Well, I mean, I hear what you say, Mr. Sheffield, you're either right or you're wrong. I would like to know what the standards are for these things, and I think the canopy can be made smaller. I think it's too close to the street. I'm willing for the owner to say, "You can't do it, I need the canopy where it is," but I think that four feet could have been, could be cut off that canopy with ease, and there'd still be plenty of overhang over the, over the pumps.
I believe that three feet could be cut off, and it would not result in any reduction in safety, and that would be permitted under the.
All right, well, your.
Agreement, if you wanted to change that.
Forty-eight to forty-five?
Forty-eight to forty-five, that would be acceptable to the, to the owner.
Forty-eight, seven to forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-five, seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The plan that he has submitted, showing the tanks and so forth, and the stanchions, and it's stamped by a registered professional civil engineer. So, is he going to put his license on the line by approving something that doesn't meet the standards? That's why we stamp things.
Well.
I don't think that he is, he is talking about gas station design, I think he's talked about what he's engineered here.
Right, and what's he engineered?
I think, Mr. Lynch, that if there is some safety standard that would be violated, we'd have to come back here and have it approved if we needed to go more than the, than the forty, forty-five.
Bernie has a point, presumably the engineer did calculate the turning radius, radial.
That's why I have a stamp, I don't want to lose my livelihood, so I'm sure this guy doesn't want to lose his livelihood.
Oh, I'm sure he wouldn't, and he.
I don't think cars can be designed.
Would your civil engineer be willing to come in and discuss this?
Well, just have him send us a letter saying that he's calculated the, that this is fine for getting in now.
I mean, I think we do need something written, because there's so many questions that have been raised. I agree with Bernie, I don't think the engineer would have stamped it without having calculated these, but if he stamped it, presumably he'd be willing to write a letter.
Well, he got something written to scale.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a scale, and he stamped it.
I understand that, but this, I mean, you can design stuff that doesn't work.
Both Alex and Pete have said they need something.
Lawyers do that, Alex, engineers don't.
Engineers do.
I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but it does seem to me, if they're proposing to move the canopy closer to Wood Street, and they're proposing possibly a smaller canopy, and we have questions about the circular circulation on the site, I think it behooves it to getting an up-to-date plan, just stamped by.
I would like to see all 13 spaces on the plan, I have to say.
I think all the elements should be on the plan, so I think this plan should be withdrawn to show where the pumps are going to go, and how big the canopy is going to be, and where the, where the parking is, and stamped to indicate that all turning movements, you know, meet requirements for, for a gas station.
Well, I would, I, you know, have my, have my doubts about the, about the pumps and all the, all the supports holding up the canopy, and how it would work, and I hear you say that it's, it's fine, but that's just not enough. I need some better convincing from, you know, on just, these are the design standards, and it's fine, it meets them, something along those lines, from someone who, who knows. So, let's.
A table, if you like, one side with the design standards, and the other with what's being provided.
I.
And a revised plan that shows all the 13 parking spaces, the canopy in the correct position, everything that has been promised with the original, plus the amended, proposed amended. I agree with Pete.
Okay.
Is he a local engineer? Is he local?
Yeah, BSC's local.
No, he's New Hampshire.
Okay, so, we're going to continue it to the 12.
Continue it to what time on the 12?
Seven thirty.
Okay.
Seven thirty.
Yeah.
Only 45 minutes late.
That's not bad. Could be much worse. Hard lines on the people who showed up dang on time, though.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's when you get to be a good guy.
Good evening, I'm Attorney Bob Sheffield, and I represent the owner and developer in this subdivision plan, and I would like to introduce Jim DeSalle of DeSalle Burke Associates.
Jim?
How you doing? My name's Jim DeSalle from DeSalle Burke and Associates of Quincy. The plan looks pretty much the same, because not a heck of a lot's been done since the last time Jim Burke was here. But we did meet with the engineering department, and a few of the issues in the letter that I just gave you, and they requested some additional soil testing. The one thing they were concerned about with the stormwater control was high groundwater, with the detention being underground. They wanted to make sure that the groundwater wasn't going to impede the usefulness of the leaching chambers that we're proposing on the road. Jim went out and did three additional soil tests, one at the very beginning of the road, one in the middle, and one up towards the cul-de-sac, which is right behind the existing house. He found tight soils, but there was absolutely no groundwater encountered. I think the test pits, and you'll see the soil logs went down about 12 feet. So, the issue of the high groundwater backing up into the leaching chambers is a moot point at this point. The water supply, the town was requesting looping it through the right-of-way out to Brushhill Lane. The client has, I believe, come to some agreements with the abutters, and they wish to get rid of that right-of-way altogether. So, in trying to deal with their request, what they, what we propose to do, and we believe is amenable with the public works department, is put a hydrant at the beginning, a hydrant at the end of the road as a blow-off, instead of looping it. So, that will be reflected on the plans once we make all these revisions. Excuse me. The proposed pavement is, is located outside the roadway in a few sections, which, you know, we all noticed, preserve the tree there, and the public works department doesn't want to accept the road, so it's going to be maintained as a private road, due to this and other legal implications. The, we're going to have to include that as part of the proposal, that the road will be maintained as a private way. There is a list of several waivers that are also required to do this type of roadway. The pavement width, the DPW has requested that the minimum pavement width be 20 feet. If the board decides something different, that's, you know, up to the board and the, and the neighbors. We're currently proposing a 20-foot road with slope granite curbing with a sidewalk on one side, but the applicant is, is open to any suggestions the board has, or the abutters. And the vertical layout, we're still requesting the 10% maximum grade, the public works, you know, said that the 10% would be the maximum grade that they would want to see.
That's, that's.
That's it?
That's all this changes?
That's it in a nutshell?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Sheffield?
I think at this time, we'd like to seek approval of the.
We're going to find out what, I think the hearing's still open, and we're going to find out what, what the people think.
By all means.
So, you guys can stand down and be available, and who would like to be heard? If anyone? I think that we have a volunteer.
You do indeed.
Identify yourself for the record.
Pass out the reading material that goes along with this.
Right, Jim, thanks.
That's helpful, thank you.
Of course, by the time I sit down, you will have read it, so.
No, we're going to let you read it, we're going to follow along.
Tim Kernan, 642 Brushhill Road, almost across the street, but not quite. We learned this afternoon of this change in plan, so what I had prepared for you is a, in this, this document, is slightly changed from, given those facts. I'm a little puzzled by the choices that get made relative to preserving historic significance. We've witnessed the town and this board rally around the century-old black oak of Central Square in an attempt to preserve it. This majestic old tree provided a sense of both history and art in a way that few other structures can. Its survival through the ages gives us a sense that time is a friend, and not everything has to change. It is a constant through generations of change, a symbol of Mother Nature's creative works. Why, as we look at the Boyle development, is there an interest to preserve the old beech tree, which may be as old as the black oak, because it offers the same sense of values that the black oak of Central Square? Yet, when it comes to this historic driveway, which holds many of the aesthetic qualities of either of these old trees, we are too ready to cast it away under the name of modern standards. One of our primary goals with this development project is to preserve the character of this historic section of Milton, and we believe the driveway is the black oak of Brushhill Road. I hope this board will see this, see the wisdom in this preservation as well. To make this development a success for all concerned, there needs to be a willingness on the part of the town, including the planning board and the DPW, to consider deviations from standards. The board needs to signal a willingness to consider new paths for future developments in Milton. The board must break from current dogmatic, hard, fast bonds to the old, tough standards that are killing the historic character of Milton. We have cited to you cases where other towns have become more proactive and forward-thinking in changing the rules to allow for more human and architecturally pleasing developments. It is the adoption of new guidelines that will result in changes that people can subscribe to. It is the adoption of more reasonable and appropriate specifications that will turn the Boyle project into a win-win for all, providing the means for a longstanding historical design that is more in keeping with human emotion and historic preservation to remain as it is. So, with that, I'd like to ask Henry Carr to step up and show you some photographs of exactly what it is we're talking about, and I think you'll see that this, this driveway, which all believe was designed by, by Olmstead, has a nice historic quality to it, and that's really one of the things that we're trying to save, and we will look forward to working with you to try to do that. And I think that the step towards a private way may facilitate that a little more easily than if it were to go a public road. So, Henry?
Can you just find if I use your board? Okay. My name's Henry Carr, I live at 676 Brushhill Road, directly across the street from the Boyle property, and I just wanted to quickly show a couple pictures that I took on, actually, March 12th of this year. This is basically a panoramic view of the property, just looking at it, which I know the, the planning board went to visit the Boyle property after the fire, and at which time, this was all overgrown. This wall, which you can see, it's a beaut, it's since been cleared, it's a beautiful, it has bright red, green, bluish stones in it, it's a, it's a beautiful stone wall. This is basically, I took a camera, just stood in one spot, and took the pictures like this. There is a storm drain right there, but you notice, well, the springs and whatnot, we've noted that the water always comes down the driveway, and then sort of shoots down Brushhill Road towards Bradley Road. But this basically gives you a good view of what this looks like today. I want to show you, one of my concerns. Well, according? I actually have a question, when you're proposing to change the opening.
Would you want to use the microphone?
Oh.
Please, thanks.
I was curious, which way were they proposing to move the driveway as you're facing it? Was it to be? Right. To the right, okay. Which, I believe, this picture shows if the driveway opening were to be moved over here, and the proposed driveway, as I see it, more or less cuts up right straight towards the mansion, at which point, the land makes a very dramatic rise, and cutting a driveway right through there, I believe, would have, would require putting retaining walls or something in order to keep the, it would be sort of like cutting a channel right through the property, which, this is my own opinion, that I prefer it to be as, have as little impact on the environment, and I know there's got to be some sort of way of, as your study showed, or that water won't just be coming, flowing down this new driveway and pouring into Brushhill Road, and essentially coming across the way, and our stone wall is across the street from this is, this is a view, I know one concern of the developers was that they. This is a view, I know one concern of the developers was that they, I was under the understanding that they couldn't have a curved driveway, because in order to look out on Brushhill Road, you had to be, you had to be able to look on both sides in order to exit, which I believe, this is looking out from the Boyle's driveway, right? You see the stone wall on one side, and, and looking, essentially, this is a 180-degree view of the road. I don't see why the existing driveway has to be dramatically moved and the stone wall destroyed. Pardon?
Vision.
Oh, yeah, the vision's, well, quite good. You can see up to, oh, I'm looking at it upside down, but you can, this is looking down toward Bradley Road. You can also see the water as usual. That's water flowing down from that area, but this is looking up towards Brushhill Lane. But the visibility is, I believe, quite excellent as it is. Basically, my comment is that I would like to see the stone wall preserved as much as possible. Is there anything else that, oh, yeah, I don't know, just on an offside. There is no sidewalk on Brushhill Road, so I'm not sure why a side sidewalk, I don't know whether that's a new requirement for a private road to have a sidewalk. But if there's no sidewalk on Brushhill Road, whoever lives in the houses takes a sidewalk down and that's it. If you have a wheelchair, then you're in Brushhill Road without a sidewalk. So if anybody else has comments about the pictures or anything, that's about all I have to comment about. Oh, the wide angle one?
You've done this before, Henry, I can see.
Well, not really, I'm nervous, but anyway, that is basically a view that I believe shows how beautiful the, the stone wall is. That's about all I have to say.
I'm not going to read all of this, actually, it'll be fairly brief. My name is John McDonald. I live at 704 Brushhill Road, across the street from the Boyle property. And the reason I asked Henry to leave that photograph up, not only is it a great photograph, but I think it sums up what we're trying to protect and what Tim so eloquently outlined as the importance, the significance of this landscape to the neighborhood. If you compare that photograph to most other subdivisions in this and other towns, you're going to obviously picture something very different from what we have here. And once this is gone, it's never going to return. And I think one of the goals we've had throughout this process is we've worked with the planning board, the historical commission, the development team, and the neighbors, is to protect to the extent possible the rural nature of this neighborhood. And we think, as I said the last time, or at least I think, as I said the last time, much of the power to protect the landscape to the extent it can be protected with a development rests in the hands of the town, the planning board, and the town engineer, and how flexible you and he will be as you move forward and set guidelines and limits on what will be developed on the site. Couple of the issues that have come up in the past, we've referenced studies, and I'm going to give you copies of those, I'm not going to read them, but I will give them to you so they'll have them. But in a meeting that Tim Kernan and I had with the planning develop, the town engineer, we were talking about, for example, the grade and our desire to see the Olmstead grade I have documents from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that talk about the importance in development of protecting natural landscapes. Referenced in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Project Development Design Guidelines, talk about the protection and present, this is the state highway department talking about how important it is to protect and preserve existing natural features. Now, part of the issue with the grade was speed limits, and the town engineer mentioned to us that although we had the chart from the study that was produced by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts showing that various grades greater than what he had recommended were allowed under their recommended guidelines, indicated that although we see signs for 20 mile an hour speed limits and perhaps 15 mile an hour speed limits, I know there's two on Harlan, something in the neighborhood of 20 mile an hour, that the state sets the minimum standard speed limit at 30 miles an hour, so charts that the Commonwealth has produced showing appropriate grades for 20 miles an hour don't apply. Well, this is all new to me, so I did a little reading and found out, in fact, the state has two ways that they allow you to determine speed limit. One is, both are under Chapter 90, one Section 18 and one Section 19, and I won't go into all of this, but the 30 mile is established as, they describe it as prima facie evidence that if you don't take any action, you can assume that in that particular type of roadway, 30 mile an hour is the maximum speed limit. And this is important because it relates to grade. However, the second approach that you can take, a town can take with the state, is to work with them on a study of the usage of the road or section of road, and using criteria that they have outlined, determine what an appropriate speed limit is. And one of the standards that they use is speed at or below which 80%, 85% of the motor's travel is the principal value used in establishing speed controls, which brings us back to points made earlier about a 500-foot road and what the travel speeds are actually going to be. And if I could just, you do that for the record so that you have a copy of it. I apologize, this is what sometimes happens, page three missing, but the important citations are on the first page, and that's Chapter, Chapter 90, Section 17 and 18, which does give the town flexibility on how they view a set speed limit, which leads into the grading. If we were stuck with a 30 mile an hour speed limit, as the town engineer believes we are, then the issues of grading aren't as flexible. In this-
Thank you.
This is several pages from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Development and Design Guide, released in 2006, and apparently is a nationwide model for developing better roads. I've taken sections of it out to support my position and left out others that don't, only kidding. I've left in the ones that relate to what we're talking about. The first page talks about how important design objectives and the protection and preservation of natural features are, which surprised me considering it's the highway department. The second page, or not including the cover sheet, is speed limits. The two pages following those speed limits, if you look at the last column on the chart, local roads, 20 to 45, 20 to 45, they define the neighborhood types, and these are the two that I thought best represented our area, either a low-density suburban or developed rural. They're similar, and they also allow, for example, a 20 mile an hour speed limit. I think if you applied the 85% of travelers' criteria, you'd be getting a 7 mile an hour speed limit. With that, why that's important to me is that we've had the debate about grade, and what can the grade be? And apparently, as I heard tonight, the town engineer does not want to see anything over a 10% grade. Well, the last page that's taken from the Mass Highway Study is one I've referenced in the past, but this is drawn directly from the Mass Highway Department's study and not a section of another report on urban planning. And if you see the two lower categories, collectors and local roads, you'll see that suburban, low-intensity areas and rural, developed areas, both of which are defined on the two previous pages, in a speed limit of 20, which I think is more than appropriate, allows for a rolling grade, a rolling terrain grade of 10. On a collector road and a local road, a grade of 12. And important to note the footnote on both of those, short lengths of grade in urban areas such as grades less than 500 feet in length, one-way downgrades, and grades on low-volume urban collectors, may be up to 2% steeper than the grade shown above. So again, this is a Mass Highway Department study that takes one from determining the type of neighborhood, the appropriate speeds for that neighborhood, and then goes to proposed grades as determined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for streets or roads within that category. And what you end up with is, based on the state's own criteria, a rolling grade under the collector suburban, low-intensity area of 12, 10 plus the allowable, 2 extra percent. And in the other category, 12 with an allowable, footnoted allowable extra 2% for 14% grade, which we're, I don't think anyone near. The reason I wanted to go through this is that when we met with the town engineer, all of the discussion about grade was based on his belief that the road's minimum speed limit that can be set on a road is 30 miles an hour. And that is true if you use the first criteria established by the Commonwealth in the study that I gave you, but if you use the second one, and I apologize for page three missing, but it is cited as the chapter, the town works with the state to determine what is an appropriate speed limit for a particular road, and then it can legally be posted at that speed limit. So with that as a basis, it applies to the grade, and in my opinion, this supports the Mass Department of Transportation Highway Division. Own documents support a higher grade than is being proposed by the town engineer, and I think that might be due to misinformation that might be being used at the time of that Another report that I'll give you is from the National Park Service, its National Trust for Historic Preservation, because this is a National Trust district. I was curious if they had any references to roadways. Now, the really thing that they're looking at primarily in this category are buildings that are located in historic landscapes, but they do break away and indicate on the last paragraph of the second page, that designed historic landscapes significant in the field of landscape architecture require a more detailed analysis of the character-defining features, which may include lawns, hedges, walks, drives, fences, walls, terraces, topography, grading, and furnishing. So again, we're in a national historic district, although it does not have any authority to enforce this, it is a recommendation by the same people that designated this neighborhood as a national historic district that great care should be taken in trying to preserve the existing grading of historic landscape features. And if we're talking about the Olmstead brothers, I think it would be considered historic landscape features, never mind just a beautiful road as you can see now. The final piece that I have is, I've mentioned a couple of times again quoting secondary sources out of studies on urban planning, two neighboring towns, relatively neighboring South Shore towns, that allow significantly narrower roadways based on the number of houses that are going into a development, and this is a very small development. And I've brought a couple of, and I'm not saying they're better than the town of Milton's planning, I only produce them to show that there's precedent for minimizing the hardscape in small developments so that the impact on the neighboring community is reduced. Combine that with the recommendations of the National Trust for Historic Preservation with the recommendations of the State Highway Department to minimize the impact on the roadways. The studies on grade allowed by the state, it certainly would be met here without changing the grade. I just introduce them as examples of precedent in other towns where narrower roadways than 20-foot are allowed. And I'll hand out the town of Ducksbury. This is a section of their subdivision bylaws. On the second page of their bylaws, you'll see that they look at pavement width based on number of lots served in a new subdivision. Local minor secondary, the local 1 to 3 lots is a 14-foot road. 4 to 10 lots, they allow an 18-foot wide road, while maintaining the same right-of-way that we have in this town, 50-foot. The second one that I've brought is from the town of Marshfield. And it's interesting, in theirs, they go a little further. They state, and I'll hand this out, and this is the last handout, I apologize. They go a little further, and on the first page, inside the cover page of their rules and regulations, they talk about the importance of maintaining the continuity of the natural topography. Cut and fill shall be avoided in all instances as possible. And then if you go to the following page, actually, the last page of there, you get into the road width allowed in the residential lane of 18 feet. So although 20 feet might be below what we're used to seeing, there really is a movement towards reducing the hardscape, as we've talked about in the past. These are two, just two of the area towns that do a lot. I think Canton's another one that's local to us. And as Henry points out in his photograph, which I think sums it up so well, as sensitive as we can be to this site, the better we will be as a neighborhood. And I think it also begins to move us towards more sensitive urban suburban planning for these developments. That's pretty much all I have to say. I don't know if anyone has a question.
Well, both these towns say 18 feet.
18 feet in Marshfield, and I believe for a subdivision of this side, size in Ducksbury, they also say 18 feet.
Right.
Which is what we're, which I like compared to the 20 feet.
But it's 18 feet of travel way, so if it were 18 feet with a sloped berm, I mean, the sloped berm is not part of the travel way. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have one question. Did you say you met with the town engineer?
Yes, Tim Kernan and I did.
And did you bring up this information and talk about these standards?
I, we brought it up from the secondary source that I had been quoting from a study on urban planning. I have not given him the primary source material, which we'd be happy to do. I think Tim has emailed him requesting a meeting to do that.
There's a couple of things that strike me is, one, if indeed this is going to be maintained as a private road as opposed to a public street, how that influences the standards that we require, and, you know, does that increase our flexibility or things like that? And then the second piece is, you know, we're laypeople, and we depend on the town engineer for issues of engineering and safety and things like that. And, you know, we're not about to override something that he feels strongly about. So I think convincing, you know, on width and grade and things like that, I mean, I'm with you to try to be as sensitive as possible, but in terms of a minimum roadway width, and, you know, in terms of gradient, you know, we really have to depend on our engineers. And so I think that's where the discussion has to occur.
Well, Tim and I are looking forward to that discussion. We had hoped to have it prior to this meeting, but it just wasn't to be. But I, what I think is going to be clear, and I hope it will be to him, and if there's a way to present it differently, the basis for the recommendation may be flawed in that the state does allow two different ways of determining the speed limit, which leads then to the, particularly the grading issue.
Yeah. I mean, in a way, this- I mean, in a way, this is, you know, more like a driveway than a street, in particular if it's going to be private. And I don't know the standards that we applied on our open space subdivisions where it's called a major driveway as opposed to a street, and how that, you know, so we'll have some of that discussion. But I, I agree with your continued concern with the entry. You know, I, as much as I see that, I do think we need a 90-degree entry. But how far that's got to go and exactly where it's positioned on the site, you know, and I think are still some things that could deserve more study in terms of, of this entry area. I mean, it sounds like, just from the presentation tonight, that the neighborhood, you know, the idea of the five-lot subdivision and the turnaround and all that, that you're focusing your energy at this point on the road itself, and particularly the entrance from the street. So, you know, we've kind of narrowed issues down, which I think is great. I, I continue to be a bit concerned with this entrance. And I would love to see locating the existing trees, particularly the major trees, anything over 10-inch or 16-inch caliper or something like that, on a site with the contours. And, you know, instead of working at 40 scale, blow it up to like 10 scale or something, and really look at the grading implications and tree preservation implications of different things. I don't think we can do the angled driveway in the existing alignment because it does cut across Dr. Andriani's property, the existing road does. And this new road certainly, you know, won't be able to go over his property. So it'll have to stay within this new. So that already forces some changes. But to try to make those changes as delicately as possible related to preservation of the wall, preservation of the trees.
And perhaps a little bit of that Olmstedian curve, whether it's.
Yeah, I think right at the roadway, you know, and it might just be the first 40 feet or something. And again, the study's here, I think you need a 90-degree entrance for site distance. But how long the length of that, that 90-degree section has to be, and, you know, how it can be worked in in order to preserve. Because I went out there and I looked at those trees and, you know, you can look at them, and there's a lot of things right near that entrance, that first 100 feet in, that it would be nice to save. And I don't, can't tell from this exactly what we're saving and what we're losing. And so I think I'd like to look at that at a greater level of detail. But it's kind of nice that we've narrowed down the issues of this whole thing down to one or two things that with some further study. And, you know, really, as a negotiation with the town engineer on some of the standards he wants to enforce, you know, maybe we can still tweak this thing a little bit.
Yeah, well, and I think it is interesting, at least from my perspective, working with the development team has brought us to this point where we're in agreement, I think, on the things that I've raised tonight. And it's convincing the town engineer that it's not only better for the town, but also his opinion could be protected by state regulations and state laws so that we could go forward.
But we certainly have to depend on him, you know.
Well, that was one of my concerns, is that you would depend on his opinion. And I, you know, I hope to convince him with this because it's black and white, state rules and regulations. And it's, you know, it's, it's, once you have it like that, it's kind of difficult to go outside of the boundaries. If I was proven wrong, I would have been proven wrong. And I would have been appealing on a different sort of thing based on pure aesthetics and being a progressive planning board versus now being at least able to fall back on state regulations.
Well, don't be surprised at the Highway Department. That design manual that they put out almost 10 years ago now is precedent-setting across the country in terms of preservation and design flexibility and things like that. I mean, it's being studied all over because they really did a great job.
Yeah, but it's an amazing document, as I've gone through it. So, thank you.
Terrific.
Anyone else want to be heard? Yes, sir.
Keith Carlson, 31 Brushhill Lane. Since Mr. Andri, Dr. Andriani has arrived, I didn't want to get up during your meeting and go over and talk to him. So I must first ask if there's been any change in access to his lot?
No, I haven't had.
All right. That's your business and the prospective builder's, developer's business. I raise it only because since it would seem that, since the town granted that a buildable lot without assurance of its access.
We did not do that. The land court did. The planning board had nothing to do with that law.
All right. A building permit was issued without assurance, that's all.
Well, thanks to the land court.
Access. All right. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, you know.
But since there is that situation, it, whoever it is, it seems to place Dr. Andriani in the position of having to petition you for a waiver to destroy part of this stone wall that we're talking about to get access, and even then would have a grade problem, if you've seen the lot, as opposed to getting a, an entrance off the driveway at a point which is well into the lot. And again, you know, what would seem to be the logical place for him to have, have access in line with his garage would be at grade. So I would hope that if whoever is in the position of having to require him or having partial destruction of the stone wall to give him access as opposed to adding it to your requirements to the prospective developer, which easy for me to say would not seem to be an onerous situation for him, nor would, when it comes time to market the five lots, to say to people that there are going to be six entrances rather than five, should not be onerous, as opposed to you or someone in the town being in the position of causing destruction of part of that stone wall. So I would hope that you would consider, if you're the appropriate body, adding that to the site plan approval, that he does give access to Dr. Andriani.
This is actually a definitive subdivision plan, and there's no site plan approval.
Excuse me. Whatever the term is.
Okay. I, I understand that if we had a, someone tell us what Dr. Andriani wants as far as a driveway is concerned, that would be useful. To date, everyone has played it very close to the vest.
Again, it's not my business other than, as a neighbor, not wanting to see part of the stone wall.
It may be our business, but we have nothing on which to proceed other than the fact that he would like to have a driveway opening on the new road, presumably.
All right.
And what sort of a driveway he wants to have is, we could speculate, but we don't know.
Okay. As I say, I'm operating out of ignorance other than
All right, well.
wanting to, if nothing else, help protect some of that stone wall.
Okay, I, I think that we would, we would be thrilled if we could get it so that the stone wall on Brushhill Road were not breached. But we have to, you know, we need some information here. It sounds like Dr. Andriani perhaps should hire an engineer and produce some plans as to what he wants.
Mr. Chairman, doesn't the doctor have the right to, God forbid, come off of Brushhill Road?
He has the right if he can get a.
A curb cut?
A curb cut.
Can you see any, he's got a permit.
He doesn't have any.
To build a house. Right? So the fact that he's got a permit, the building inspector gave him a permit to build a house, obviously thinking that he would be coming up Brushhill Road if this development doesn't go through. So he does have the right to break this beautiful wall down.
Well, he doesn't without our permission.
It's a scenic road.
It's a scenic road.
And who pays for the house? City Council?
This is not, this is, it's a scenic road, and he needs our approval to go through the stone wall. And, and who pays for the house is not our department.
It isn't?
No.
I mean, I think, I think it's obvious that the solution we're all aiming for is off this new driveway. But somehow, we've got to get Dr. Andriani and the developer together to produce some grading and plans that show a driveway because we don't want to go up Brushhill Road. So how, and that's what Alex is trying to make happen here. And short of that, you know, it's hard to design this entrance or anything else unless there's, this is addressed.
Understood. I would hope that, speaking for myself, perhaps the other neighbors might agree. I would hope that the town might, whoever it is in the town, might consider that since there was this unusual situation of granting a buildable lot and a building permit without access, the town might be oriented to also treat this a little exceptionally as to how to handle it. So that the stone wall is not partially destroyed.
I'd be surprised if the plans on which the house was built didn't include some driveway. I would guess that they would have, you know, whether we'll approve that driveway or what shows.
That would seem to be the case, certainly, yes.
But, you know, I mean, the solution is to produce some plans that have a driveway coming off this road. That's what's got to happen.
The driveway, not Brushhill Road. Yep.
Right. I think that's what we're trying to make happen.
Excellent. Thank you.
And there is an additional item, which is when the roadway is being constructed, presumably Dr. Andriani will be living in his house. And while the roadway is being constructed, he's going to probably want to access it.
Paul Andriani, right now I'm at 20 Norman Street. Probably be there for a while still. I would really love to move into the house. I had quite a few problems, and I apologize to all the neighbors for the mess. And I really apologize for that. I am quite upset that it wasn't maintained the way it should have been by the contractor who's been fired. And we haven't presently hired, we have just presently hired another contractor. But I apologize for the way the site looks. It's just not right, nor to me, nor to all of you. In any case, you're asking me to design a driveway. The only driveway I could possibly design, and I've talked to Mr. Hanigan about designing the driveway, would be one that just stays right on my own lot because I don't have any control over the road. And part of the problem is, I can't speak with Anthony because he says he can't make any decisions till the road has been designed. So I'm sort of in a situation where I can't tell you how I, how I would like it is one way, one thing that I may want. But he's, he's got to wait until the road has been approved to figure out how they're going to connect to my driveway. But I have made plans with Mr. Hanigan to allow an area on my own property if I'm not able to connect to the private road that's proposed. And so I have thought about it. I'm always concerned about it. I don't want to open a hole in the wall. I think it looks great the way it is. But I'm sort of stuck in limbo here. And I would definitely hire an engineer, but I don't know what to tell him, honestly, at this point, until everyone has reached an agreement as to how this road is to be built. And as far as it passing through my property, I don't know if it's a possibility or not, but if they want an easement to allow that to continue to go through my property the way it is now, I don't think I'd have a problem with that. So if that makes it easier for anybody, I would be happy to do that because I'm happy with the road the way it is right now. And all that water you see coming down is actually a spring. I gotta solve that problem too. And it just continuously drains, so. But that's where I stand. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to let you know where I stand. Thank you.
Better to catch 22. We can't approve the driveway until we know what's happening with all of the lots. And they can't tell us what they're doing until they know about the driveway. Somebody's going to make a move on that one.
But he's, the doctor has just kind of said that he wouldn't mind if the road stays the way it is on his land, so.
Good evening. I'm Christine Dougherty. I live at 34 Brushhill Lane. And I'm one of the direct abutters to the property. And I came tonight to speak about one of those issues that has pleasantly been resolved in my favor. So I don't necessarily feel that I have to say much other than that I'm here on behalf of Charles and Rosemarie de Vegvar, who are my neighbors to the north, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. The right-of-way that was involved in the suggestion or proposal by the DPW to loop the pipe into Brushhill Lane is my driveway. So needless to say, both the de Vegvars and the Doughertys were opposed to that for a number of reasons, which we've set, set forth in a letter and an email, which I'll just simply submit. It doesn't appear that it's an issue anymore, given what the developer said tonight about the two hydrants and not looping into Brushhill Lane. But in the event that it rears, rears its ugly head again, I just want it to be on record.
I'm Tabor Keely. I'm at 674 Brushhill Road, nearly across the street from it. And I'd like to address two things. One, Pete, you had mentioned that you had been to the site and were concerned about a 90-degree entrance to the street. And if you were actually at the site and you're driving in and out of that driveway, you know that you can make a direct 90-degree entrance to Brushhill Road. It appears to be at an angle, the driveway, but there is a difference. The stone wall retracts from the street a ways back. And at least if you're driving a vehicle 20-foot long, you have no trouble entering the street at a 90-degree angle. My other question here is, we've talked a lot about the town engineer. And professionally, I spend a lot of time in front of planning boards and conservation commissions in Southeastern Mass. And this is the only town I've ever been in that doesn't have the engineer sitting here, you know, ready for us to question. And I wonder why that is. Typically, the town engineer is a subcontractor that's hired on a per diem or per hour basis, and it's paid for by the developer. But this is so that the planning board can be informed as to the state regulations and the design standards that you would look for, whether it's a gas station or, you know, a private driveway, what have you. And it's a little odd that here we are questioning what the town engineer might have said to Tim Kernan or not, and whether or not they know anything about this when he really ought to be here. And I was, I would hope that maybe in the future, something could be done to change that practice so that we wouldn't have to guess at what the engineer might want to say. Thank you.
Good point. We do have the, Tabor, we do have the town planning here, though. He's got a couple of hats.
I'd like to see a stamp on it.
Well, we certainly give respectful consideration to the opinion of the town engineer. We do have the developer's engineer. And we'll be happy to receive information from actually any engineer. And we'll make a appropriate decision. So I've been, as I say, we pay respectful attention to the town engineer, but he doesn't dictate what we do. And we, in the past, when Paul Cantor was the planning director.
And the town engineer.
He was the town engineer. So he, he did sit at the table, but after, after he moved on or moved out.
Moved on, yes.
We, we, we actually, we, we had outside engineering help for quite a long time.
Earth tech.
Earth tech. And then our contract with earth tech lasted.
Disappeared, I believe.
Disappeared. Actually, it was lost. The contract was lost. So that's how we end up at the table without an engineer.
We should probably rectify that situation.
And we, we really do want to, we, we, we feel that this would be, this is something that's on our agenda to correct. So you, you raise a good point. Now, anyone else? Because if not, we're going to let the applicant say a few words. The applicant has a lawyer, and the lawyer undoubtedly will have a solution since he's been back there thinking.
And writing, too.
And writing furiously.
I can make a few comments relative to the questions I've asked tonight. The idea about the 18-foot wide road is fine with us. The town did mention, you know, the 20 feet, and what we had proposed was 20 with a two-foot, with a sloped branded curb. So it's not a, you know, it's not a sharp curb. It's got a little bit of an edge on it. So I can ask John Thompson about reducing the pavement with the 18 feet with the sloped branded, if that's acceptable to him. We don't have a problem with that. The problem we have with moving the entryway over, and I spoke with the developer, and the wall, any wall that we do remove, we will reuse the stone to fix any holes that are left open from the existing opening. So the only opening that will be there will be where the road is now. So if we have it in this spot here, the stones that are removed from here will be used to fill in the existing driveway opening now. The reason why we didn't want to come in here, I mean, ideally, if we could just leave that driveway right now and use it and build five houses, you know, we would do it. But you have an issue here of coming in at 45 degrees. I mean, the road right now comes in at about a 45 degree angle here, the driveway, at this point right there. And I understand it does flail open now. But it's...the reason for this is mostly the fire apparatus. You have to have a leveling area and it has to be as close to perpendicular to the street as possible. If we did that using this existing opening, we'd still have to come in here and we'd be wiping out all these trees. And then we'd be curving this way and then curving back. It just doesn't make any sense for fire apparatus. This opening coming in here and closing this off will preserve all these trees that are in here that are just to the left of the driveway as you go in. We had a plan a while back that was brought in for the site walk that showed all the existing trees that we were going to be keeping and the few that would be taken down here. And if you physically go to where the driveway's going to go in now, and it's, I believe it's marked, you can see it's actually a sparse area. It's actually...there's less trees removed in here than if we pulled out here. So I think that by closing this driveway in with the existing stone and putting this driveway in here and then curving it this way, we're reducing...we'll be reducing the impact of the driveway coming in. And the, you know, pavement, if we can reduce it down as much as, you know, the town will allow, we're fine with that.
Well, at one point, I suggested if you could bend the road a little bit, you wouldn't necessarily have to bend it as much as it currently is, but bend it to give the Homesteadian impression down at the end. So you don't have...I remember that when the Carbrays were designing their subdivision, we had an architect on the board who said, "Well, let's bend the road a little bit." And it was a great improvement.
The problem with this is, this is the area that's critical to fire trucks, especially if you're coming down at a 10% grade or 12, if we, you know, do get a...
A bend doesn't have to be a turn.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, let's let him...
The fire station is in the direction of the present 45 degree angle. The fire trucks will be coming.
Unless they close it. Well, the ladder truck actually would be coming the other way.
Were there any problems getting the fire engines up there this past month?
I was there. I don't know.
I was there. We had no fewer than 25 fire trucks up there, and they're not a problem.
That's what the...I'm just going by what the design standards are.
Did they chip over them?
But that's the reason for this. And that's the reason for the 90, as close to 90 degrees as possible coming in, and it's mostly public safety.
All right. But if we decided collectively that we would prefer not to have a 90-degree angle, do you have an issue with changing it to accommodate a less sharp angle?
A less sharp angle.
Yes. Instead of 90 degree, having it more like what it is now.
90 degrees is a sharp angle.
That's actually pretty...if you see the existing condition, the driveway comes in, once you pull it, it's wide. It comes in at an angle.
All right. So maybe sharp wasn't the correct word. My point is, do you have an objection to having the driveway be more like the current conditions, other than the fire engine access?
Even if you only move it over 10 feet or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And would you just slide this over like 10 feet?
Yeah.
That's probably doable. Well, don't have to fight if I don't sound like it.
Well, we'll find out some of them, but...
Okay. Now, we do want the fire departments in, but what do you hear about this?
You asked me a while ago to find out what the fire department wanted.
Yes.
It does go back to Mr. Carr's comment that for the fire engines, the first one responding does come up Brushhill Road, but every other one is coming the other way.
Right.
They would prefer that it was at a 90-degree angle. When they left, they did not come out and take a left. They all went out and went the other way and then up rather. They did not come out and take a left.
But if we bent the road a little bit, just to give it a little bit of...
Bizarre.
Wiggle?
Go back to the other towns that Mr. McDonald was so nice to give you, and they say 90 degrees, too.
How far up does it have to be 90 degrees?
Since he only gave me part, I can't give you that answer.
You don't have this in the top of your head?
I think we could probably make that one radius, the last radius, a little bit longer and shove it over 10 feet. It'd probably still fit in there and be in essence 90 degrees. And whether that saves any trees on the right side or not, I don't know.
Keep in mind that this illustration here shows that the driveway is to move over about 10 feet.
Right. That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. And we're just trying to work on nudging it over a little bit. And I agree with Mr. DeSalle that whatever stones are displaced on one side would be put on the other so that, you know, we're not just blasting through there. But under any of these scenarios, we still have to work, figure out, and I don't know legalistically and stuff how you do that, but we've got to figure out how we get Dr. Andriani in his house. So, you know, whether the engineers can meet informally without the lawyers and kind of put a sketch plan together that solves the issue because, you know, we are going to want that to happen. So sooner or later, people have to talk to one another so that the end result is when we approve a plan, it's got to be a plan that gets Dr. Andriani in his driveway.
Okay.
One other question. If you look at these trees that are in here, we proposed to cut, most of them are dead. And you can see how sparse it is here, whereas if we came in here, we'd be taking these out.
Yeah. We don't want to take those out. We can go 10 feet without disturbing those.
It depends on the pole.
Yeah.
Let's hear from the developer.
The more that we bend that...
Why don't you come and speak in the microphone so everyone, everyone in town can hear you?
Catch the TV, too.
Just a quick comment.
Once we get you, it won't be quick.
I just wanted everyone to keep in mind, the more we bend that road, the more we're going back to the original problem of buffer zone. The more we bend the road, say we come and we bend that a little bit more, well, this house goes further back. We bend it this way, these houses go further back, which is part of the original issue that we're...
No, I'm just talking at the entrance, not the radius that you're looking at, but the next one down.
You were talking about just bending.
Just in the entrance a little bit, just to give a little edge, but not far enough that we disturb the conifers and the trees over there. But if we can...
I'll let you mark it.
Yeah. If we can touch it a little bit...
Yeah, sure.
A little bit.
Tweak it a little bit to get a little softer alignment there. I think it'd be great.
Also, keep in mind, as you look at this, look at this road as it goes up the property from Brushhill Road, this is the view you're going to get. And what this is going to be, it's why we want to get the slope increased, is because if the road is going to come up this field here and it has to maintain a low grade, there's going to be invatments on it. It's going to look like a superhighway. So if the grade is allowed to rise, then it eliminates some of the huge impact it's going to have visually.
Well, have you looked at the plan? Are they graded so?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. There's a wall up there and there's a grade.
Okay. So you're suggesting that if there were a greater grade permitted...
It would reduce some of the cutting. It has to happen.
And you don't have an issue with the increase in grade, correct?
We don't know.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind that this width of this driveway now is over 33 feet. So there's plenty of width here to allow for the appearance of a right angle.
Homestead didn't design a 33-foot wide driveway, I can assure you.
Look, but right past Brushhill Road, it's 33 feet. The very, very entrance along Brushhill Road is 33 feet wide from stone wall to stone wall.
Maybe his design shifted.
No, it is. That's correct.
His brother did it.
Right.
The brother wasn't as good.
Homestead was long dead by the time this happened, but that's...
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm a little flummoxed as to exactly what to do here because we would really like...I mean, it seems like, it seems like the neighbors and the developer were so close. And...
I think there needs to be a meeting with the town engineer so that he is presented with the same information that we have and we can get his opinion.
Okay. Let's get the town engineer's opinion and on these...I mean, I understand the...let's get the town engineer's opinion. I personally think 18 feet is plenty for this private road and we've...
Without a sidewalk.
Well, I don't know that we...I don't know of without a sidewalk. We've never, we've never done that before. And I think, I think that, I think that a stone, a stone sidewalk, ground stone would be, would be perfectly okay.
Other than the low estate, are there any other sidewalks in the area?
No.
I don't think so.
No curb, no sidewalk. Brushhill Road.
Yeah.
None.
That's the next...I would like to sit in on the meeting with the town engineer and be on part of that.
So you want to have a meeting with the town engineer prior to our next appearance view, or is it that you want the town engineer here at a meeting with you so we all...
I could be like both, actually.
I would say great if you had to come.
I think that the town engineer should be met with outside of our meeting.
But you don't want him here to answer questions?
After you people meet.
Yeah. I think, I definitely think they should meet with him before a nice meeting.
I don't think that there's any reason why we need to bring the town engineer here to answer questions. If there are questions, we should get the questions and we'll ask the town engineer the questions. I mean, we've got a number of questions to ask him.
Okay.
If we tweak the entrance in here and make some of the adjustments that have come up this evening, and tweak it and make an appointment with John Thompson, you can call him, you know, anyone that wants to come and be notified of that meeting and the abutters also, and sit down and say, "Look, this is what we've got. This is, you know, as long as everyone agrees with what we're trying to do." And then, you know, everyone can make their case about this, you know, why this should work.
That sounds pretty simple.
And we'll look at all the different, you know, the aspects of it. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, tweaking the front, but we do want to save the trees in this area here. And then once you start moving it around too much...
We don't, we don't want it moved too much. We want it, we want it moved just enough so that the neighbors get the idea that it's okay.
Just enough to preserve as much as possible of the current view. As much as possible.
All right. Let's, Mr. Clark, you can...
Another job.
The unenviable task of trying to coordinate this meeting.
Sorry. Continue to the 12th?
We're going to continue this to the 12th. How long did we give the...
We have 6:45, 7:30. So it's 8 o'clock? How long? No, wait. How long?
I would think that 8 o'clock should...
Granite Avenue, how long will Granite Avenue take?
Do you think that 36 Central is going to take you 45 minutes?
What? Central Avenue?
Yeah.
Yeah. We did 6:45 to 7:30.
We're going to discuss the...
It'll take 45 minutes?
We're going to discuss the landscaping.
Well, Pete's going to approve all that before we meet. Then it's going to be a rubber stamp.
He's going to report. How about make it 7:45?
7:20.
7:20. Well, we can't because the others at 7:30, and this is going to take long.
Okay. 8 o'clock.
Granite Avenue is not going to take half an hour.
7:45.
7:45 on the 12th.
How old's the date on that?
The 12th. May 12th.
May 12th.
Well, thanks, everyone, for your patience. And I really hope that we get something that no one feels unhappy about, including you, Doctor.
Happy to have a new contractor, is that it?
He does have a contractor, yeah.
That's cool.
Bill, do we have anything else? Okay. Well, I'm going to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Construction materials?
Second that. Eddie seconded it.
On your copper?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The board is adjourned.